Landers?
Here.
Commissioner Raskin?
Here.
Vice Chair Reese?
Here.
Chair Pastor?
Here.
Thank you, Melissa. Now that we've done the roll call, let's move on to the Planning Director's Report. Mr. Martin.
Good afternoon, Commission. Thanks for joining us on a rare Monday Planning Commission meeting. I don't remember too many of those. Melissa's putting up the slide. So coming up, your next meeting obviously will be Friday, the 24th. That meeting starts at 3:00 P.M. The October 6th meeting has been canceled. On the 20th of October, we have a conditional use permit application for a medical cannabis facility at 925 Wilshire. This is one of the two that are allowed under our medical cannabis ordinance. We have received a second application for another location on Wilshire, a little bit further east. So at this point, we have both of the CUP applications. Again, this one's coming on the 20th, and then the other one we're reviewing and will schedule sometime soon. The same night, we have a CUP for 500 Broadway for a bank in the Bigs used project that's currently under construction at Fifth and Broadway. And that same night, we have a zoning text amendment for tattoo parlors. What this would do is, in places in the city where tattoo parlors are allowed by minor use permits, this would change it to allow them by right. So they would no longer have to go through a use permit process. They would, of course, still be subject to any health code and police requirements, but we would be eliminating the minor use permit. And then also, there's a track map for 1315 Third Street. That's the Food Court project or building in the 1300 block of the promenade. So this is just a map to divide up the spaces. We already talked a little bit about AB 361, and I know Heidi's prepared to talk about that. They're answering questions if needed. City Council items upcoming on the 28th, next Tuesday, is the Promenade revitalization plan. So this is the plan that the Commission reviewed a month or two ago. We'll be taking several recommendations on changes to the code to make it easier for certain uses to go in on the promenade. And then there's a kind of a second bucket of items that are more long-term visionary ideas related to everything from increasing the FAR on the promenade to closing Arizona permanently through traffic to turning the alleys into pedestrian paseos. All of those kind of things are, as I'm sure you recall, included in the plan. But those are things that will require more staff analysis, in some cases, sequel work. So not something we can do immediately. Those items will also need to kind of compete with all the other pending priorities in the division. So we'll need to look at those in the context of things like everything from the private tree ordinance to other pending planning priorities that we have. Not much more to say about the housing element. We do have, in addition to the Planning Commission's scheduled meetings this week, we have council scheduled for October 12th and 13th if needed. So all of that will get to council review and hopefully approval by October 15th, allowing the city to meet its step-by-step. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, David. Can you just explain to the public what AB 361 is?
Yeah, so that's the bill that allows the continuation of virtual meetings as a result of the COVID pandemic. So that was set to expire the end of September, and now it's been extended out further. Yeah, so that's pretty much what it is. Again, Heidi could probably give a much better explanation and any more detail if you need that.
Yeah, Heidi, do you have anything to add about, do you know yet what we need to do, if anything?
Sure, so we are looking into that. So the Planning Director is correct. The emergency, that portion of the Governor's emergency order that allows for teleconferencing meetings is expiring, is set to expire on September 30th. On the 16th of September, AB 361 was signed into law and became effective immediately. There are some procedural, potential procedural requirements in order to extend teleconferencing beyond September 30th. So we are looking into that and will have that answer for you prior to the, well, you'll see it on the agenda if anything's necessary. We're still working that out as it will apply to all city boards and commissions. So we're looking at it from that perspective as well.
Thank you. Commissioners, does anybody have questions? Tom, Commissioner Landrus.
Thank you. Thank you, Heidi. And as you know, the Governor just did another executive order related to AB 361 just today. So we are flying, we are building the ship as we're taking the journey. I just wanted to clarify for the public and just get your clarification for this. We will, at such point as we go back in person, I believe that Santa Monica has committed to keeping telephonic public comment up and running. Is that correct? Will the Planning Commission be able to keep that going?
I believe that is the intent.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to, it's important, I think we've enabled many more people to participate since we've been virtual, and I know we'll stay virtual for as long as we need to. But just want to make sure that we're continuing to maximize our public participation. So thanks.
I was unmuted that whole time. Anybody else have questions for the Director? I see none. Let's move on to Planning Commissioner announcements. Anybody have any announcements? Going once, going twice, going, going, gone. Okay. So I'm now going to, again, or again tonight, anyway, announce the public comment procedures. Please note tonight's procedures for public comments. We are accepting oral public comment by phone through pre-registration systems noted on the agenda. Registration for oral comment closed at 3:30 P.M. today. If you are a member of the public who registered for public comments, please check your email for call-in instructions. Instructions were emailed at the start of this meeting. Written comments received up until noon today have been read by the Commission. Comments received afternoon today will be considered part of the record of the proceedings, but will not be posted online with the Planning Commission's agenda, might not be reviewed by the Planning Commission, and will not be read aloud during public comment during the meeting. Please remember, the moderator chat here in Blue Jeans is for technical help only from admin staff. It is not for public comments. Let me repeat. Please do not public comment in the chat or ask any other questions unless they are technical questions for admin staff. The Commission cannot see the chat, and comments will not be forwarded to the Commission or entered into the record. So let's move on. The next agenda item is 12 minutes. We have none. After that, item seven is Statement of Official Action. We also have none of those. So let's go ahead and move on to the public hearing. And let's look at the consent calendar, please, which we're going to start with AA, which is a resolution of intention for adoption of Resolution Number 21-10, declaring the Planning Commission's intention to consider recommending to the City Council that the Council amend the zoning ordinance, allow tattoo parlors to be permitted instead of requiring a minor use permit in the city's mixed-use and commercial and downtown districts.
I move the consent.
Who's second? Jim? Okay, so moved by Commissioner Fresco, seconded by Vice Chair Reese, Commissioner Raskin.
Thank you, Chair. I just feel compelled to say for the public record that this vote expresses no views whatsoever on the merits of the underlying action.
Thank you, Commissioner Raskin, for reminding of this. Yes, this is merely a resolution for staff to go ahead and look at potential amendments to the code. And we will come back on October, what was it? Twenty? What was the date?
The 20th, October 20th.
So we will be coming back on the 20th, or we're intending to do that to consider this text.
So just to be clear, this is temporary tattoo. No permanent ink will be inserted into any skin as a result of this vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, with that, we have a roll call vote, please. Oh, there, I should also mention there were zero public items. Commissioner Fonda Bonardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reese?
Yes.
Chair Pastor? Yes, and you need to call Commissioner. Melissa, Miss Shawn. Oh, I'm so sorry. I thought I called him, Commissioner Landrus.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you. Unanimous. Thanks, everyone. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to item nine, which is discussion. This is a discussion and possible direction to staff regarding the red line revisions to the July 1st, 2021 Housing Element Draft for the sixth cycle. And this is for preparation of the final public hearing draft of the six-cycle housing element mandate update. And we're going to have one public comment, although I am surprised we only have one. But Melissa, is that right? We only have one? I'm registered. Okay. So here's what we're going to do. We're going to hear the staff report in its entirety. We're going to hear the single public comment. And then what I would like to do is basically go through the elements, essentially how we went through it last time, so following the form of the HCD letter. As always, if someone has already talked about the point you want to make, please don't repeat it. And ideally, what I'm thinking is what could happen. Well, number one, I'm hoping we can get through all of it tonight. Secondly, I'm hoping that either on Friday, staff can come back to us with basically a bullet-pointed list of what we discussed and what will be integrated into the document. So that is kind of where my head is. I think let's go ahead and have the hearing and then see what that looks like. Commissioner Fresco.
So did you just suggest that the things we recommend tonight, assuming we have consensus on them, will be integrated into the document that goes to City Council? Or is it going to be another situation where Council gets a document, staff recommends with a list of the changes that we recommend? How is it going to work?
That is a, that's a good question. And I think I would like to see our changes integrated into the document. I feel pretty strongly about that. So that's the direction I would like to make. And something else occurs to me, and I know I'm like jumping the gun a little bit, but right, we have a hearing scheduled for October, or for Friday at 3:00. We also have October 6th, which we don't have a hearing on. So I suppose another possibility would be to actually see a red line draft on October 6th. So food for thought, let's just keep all of these things in mind as we proceed. Commissioner Lambert?
I just have a question. I tried, I mean, obviously, I've read the staff report, and I tried to correlate it with the programs and the changes in the programs. I found that difficult. So is there an alternative whereby we could somehow look at the staff report and then go? Because all the changes in the programs, I assume, reflect HCD's comments. And it just seemed more rational for me to look at the program changes when I was considering what was going on.
I think there are a number of people who have other comments besides those in the program.
No, I understand.
So I think, to me, that would be confusing, but we can.
I just found it confusing, I just found it confusing to correlate the staff report with the program chart. But maybe that's just me.
Commissioner Landrus?
So I don't know if this is the right time to say it, but since we're talking about how we're going to have our conversation, I'll say it now. I want to share a degree of some concern that we, when we shared some of our thoughts, I believe it was on August 18th, we didn't take a lot of straw votes. And then I thought we had some consensus around some issues, and I didn't see them reflected so clearly in the staff report. So I would like to request that we take straw polls wherever possible so that it is crystal clear what direction we are giving. I'm a bit frustrated that we're going to have to re-rehearse some things because they didn't get memorialized the way I thought we all thought they would be. So that's my request.
I think that's an excellent idea. And Commissioner Lambert, and then Commissioner. I think that if, as we go through the summary of changes in the staff report, if we have that don't get addressed, that you have in your notes, we can do that at the end. Commissioner Fresco?
Can we just hear from staff about what they were thinking about the red line and the final draft and what goes to Council? Because we're kind of deciding what we would like, but I would like to know what the plan is.
Do you want me to speak to that? Commissioner Pastor? Okay. Sure, I mean, it depends on, you know, obviously, the extent of what we hear tonight. A lot, if they're, you know, fairly straightforward changes and they're simple to make, we could certainly incorporate those, you know, even by Friday. But if they're more extensive, we may not be able to make it by this Friday. But of course, our goal is to actually have all of the changes that PC recommends into the draft that is submitted to Council.
Beautiful. Thank you so much.
And Rachel, I just had thrown out that October date, but I realize I have forgotten that you need to integrate everything for Council. So what's the date you need to get the, have the draft done for Council?
Next week. Yeah, I mean, given time constraints and Council agenda prep, we have to get everything in usually by, before, before the, two weeks before. So we're already pretty cut and close.
Okay, thanks, Rachel.
And just quickly, if I may, due to noticing requirements, if you do not act on Friday for your adopt or resolution recommendation on Friday, we will not be able to notice for October 12th. We won't make the Council.
Okay, so scratch that idea. Thank you for correcting that. Okay, let's do the staff report. And I'm going to say, to try to keep the staff report short, I think everyone is pretty familiar with HCD letter and sort of really focus on the substantive aspects.
So Chair Pastor, I'm going to just give a quick introduction and then turn it over to Rachel. So as I think is pretty clear, so the draft is, it's a revision to the July draft, and it specifically is to address the HCD comments to achieve our goal of a compliant housing element. The purpose of the meeting tonight, of course, is for the Planning Commission to give feedback on the proposed changes so that we can then turn around something quickly for their adoption, or for your adoption on September 24th. Generally, the kinds of things included are technical changes that are, again, in response to HCD's comments and substantive changes to firm up the housing programs in Chapter 5 based on recommendations from HCD staff and language we have seen from other certified elements. Zoning code and specific implementation has been pushed out to summer of 2022 based on the Planning Commission's direction and action. And this obviously is in order to provide time for HCD to certify the housing element and give us the base to work from for implementation. So, you know, the schedule on the changes and the implementation is different than what we had originally talked about. But I think it's consistent with the direction of the Planning Commission. And then just again, to clarify that from a timing standpoint, we must adopt by October 15th to be not, or not to be out of compliance. And then the additional 120 days mentioned in HCD letter is not a grace period, but just the timing necessary for the city to avoid having to update every four years. So with that, I will hand it over to Rachel where they will get into the details. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Actually, Ross, can you go back to the previous screen? So just to remind you all, the HCD letter is really divided into five separate sections. I think you'll probably want to focus on some sections more than others, of course. And so we'll try to breeze through this presentation quickly on the things that are fairly straightforward. Just as David mentioned, you know, we reviewed the HCD letter and had several conversations with them, and a lot of their comments, you know, are pretty standard and typical in that, you know, they're requiring us to address very requirements, statutory requirements that are necessary to have a housing element that is compliant. A lot of the stuff they are requiring clarification or further information on. And so we've done all that. We've done our best to do all that. And so tonight, we're going to go over the various changes of the housing element that we've incorporated to address their concerns. Next slide. So the first section, as we said, was Section A, which addresses housing needs, resources, and constraints. All this mirrors what was in the staff report that you have in front of you, and so I'm not going to go over the details of it. But first off, just as an overview, a lot of the stuff is in reference to information that they want to clarify and add it or supplement it. This information may have been provided in a different section, so it was pulled forward. In particular, the fair housing chapter needed some information that was pulled into from Appendix B. So all of that has been pushed in there. Next slide. Secondly, there was also the desire to include certain issues and data, and for example, the areas of concentrated affluence. I know there was a question asked about that. And based on our initial analysis back in June, there were no RCAAs. However, we did a remap using the most latest and updated data, and there is three census tracts that are considered concentrated areas of influence, affluence. And so we've added that in. Additionally, there were some, the HCD wanted some additional information, disproportionate housing needs. Those have been added, and new maps were created. Next slide. Also, they wanted additional analysis about local data and other relevant factors. As we've said before, this was all provided in the 2020 analysis of fair housing that was done by the city. We've basically highlighted a lot of that information and pulled that into Chapter 2. In addition, a lot of, there was a lot of clarification, questions asked about the SSI relative to how the SSI addressed segregation and integration patterns, as well as how it affected various income groups in the city. So we've added new data and new maps showing the sites relative to socioeconomic data for each of the census tracts. Slide. Also, they've remarked that the programs in the housing element do not appear to, you know, really address AFFH. And so they specifically want actions that specifically address housing mobility, housing choice, community preservation, displacement protection. And so we felt a lot of our current city actions weren't appropriately discussed so that HCD understood what exactly we were doing. So we pulled a lot of the existing programs that we currently do for AFFH into Chapter 2. We've expanded the discussion of what new programs there are as well. And then HCD also wanted a projection of ELI households. As you're well aware, that GAG only has targets for very low, low-income and moderate households, but state law requires us to project ELI households, so we've done that. Next slide. Also, they wanted information about the conditions of the housing stock. We added some additional data with regards to substandard housing conditions, but we are still waiting on code enforcement to provide us the data on units with housing violation. Next slide. Another comment they addressed was to provide additional clarification on the suitable sites inventory. Specifically, they wanted to know what affordability levels were of the pending and approved projects. And so we've included that. And they also wanted assurance that those affordability levels will be indeed guaranteed. So we've added language that all units will be de-restricted for minimum of 55 years, as is the standard for our AHPP program. Next slide. Continuing on with the suitable sites inventory analysis, they wanted us to support the use of maximum floor areas in calculating capacity and to account for the likelihood of non-residential uses on the site. So we've added more data on approved and allowable FARs from previous projects. We've added the units per acre that was approved, as well as developed. We've also provided a graphic showing the number of commercial versus residential project applications. And we've also noted that, you know, our posed FARs right now are really geared towards incentivizing residential versus commercial. So we've added all that in there. They've also wanted to provide some additional documentation showing that the non-vacant sites are suitable for development of housing. And so we've added additional discussion about how each of the site was determined to be a high-potential site. Next slide. With regards to city-owned sites, they wanted information about land use designations, existing uses and constraints. So we've added all that information in, including any information about existing leases on each of the city-owned sites. We've also refined Program 2B to specifically include a commitment to issue one RFP for at least one city-owned site by December 2023. Program 2B was also refined to include the targeted number of, I believe, 1,600 units to target for the next housing cycle. And in addition, they wanted information to show that our zoning is appropriate for low-income households, meaning that we are, we indeed allow for more than 30 units per acre. So we've added that in there as well, showing this estimated units per acre of recent housing projects. Next slide. And ADUs, they felt that we shouldn't be counting ADUs based on the ones that are in progress. Rather, they wanted us to count it based on the number of building permits that have actually been issued. So we've adjusted our ADU projections accordingly. And so we have a new projection of 352 ADUs for the next six-cycle housing element. Furthermore, they wanted demonstration that the small sites, which are sites that are less than half an acre, are adequate to accommodate housing. So we've simply updated the table of current and past projects to include the FARs, the allowable FARs, the units per acre, to show that all of our sites are adequate to accommodate 30 units per acre. For infrastructure, they just want a clarification that whether or not there is water, existing sufficient water and sewer capacity, we've added language in there. They also said that with regards to state law, Government Code 655897 requires that water and sewer priority be given to projects that include low-income units. So this was a new program that we've added to comply with state law. And then lastly, they had to provide an FYI of submitting the SSI on the HCD's electronic form, which we previously did, so we will resubmit with some additional detail to be provided. Next slide. And with that, I'm just going to turn it back over to Ross, and he'll go over constraints.
Thanks, Rachel. So the first section regarding constraints in HCD's letter was sites for zoning for a variety of housing types. So before I kind of jump into these specific ones that were called out, I just wanted to mention that we did add a new program in, I believe it's 2G, to review all of our special needs housing types, all of our residential land uses, specifically in regards to housing for persons with disabilities, just to make sure that we are consistent with state law and any changes that have currently happened since our last update. However, they did mention these four specific housing types. The first, emergency shelters, they just wanted us to add, to show capacity for how, to show that using our SSI that we have the capacity to have a certain number of beds. for how, to show that using our SSI that we have the capacity to, um, have a certain number of beds tied to our last homeless count of nine hundred and seven that would be by right. So that analysis was provided in appendix E. Uh, for supportive housing, they wanted us to demonstrate that this was a by-right use. Uh, it is already a by-right use, so additional clarification was provided. And also just kind of highlighting that this was already, uh, something that we were doing. But again, tied to that new housing program, uh, we will be reviewing that just to make sure there isn't any impediments that we are not aware of. Employee housing, this was a new, uh, section that we added. Uh, we kind of just showed additional analysis showing that we were complying with their employee housing act. And for ADUs, um, HCD mentioned that our AD ordinance might be out of compliance. They were going to be providing an additional letter stating what is wrong with, or what is not compliant. Uh, so with program one G, we added in that we will update, um, that ordinance as needed. Uh, the next, um, section for the constraints were regarding land use controls and fees and exemptions. Uh, you know, staff added additional language regarding some of the potential constraints on land use controls. And we did update the programs of one E, one F, and one J, uh, regarding the DCP, BAP, and the zoning ordinance in general, that we will be, you know, comprehensively reviewing all land use controls in relation to housing projects. So we might have specifically called out, you know, new FARs and new heights, but we had added additional language stating that we would be looking at fees. We'd be looking at any other ancillary development standards, uh, that might pertain to housing. Because essentially, any development standard could present a constraint. And given the direction that the commission gave us last time we were before you, you know, this will be done very much through a public process, uh, to hear from developers and the community what constraints might be against housing and weigh them against essentially community desires. Uh, same with fees and extractions, we made it clear that CUPs are a very rare occurrence with some housing, uh, types, which might be updated through that new housing program. And we also revised, uh, kind of the analysis done for the city fees that are imposed on development costs, uh, using three very specific prototypes of a three-unit condo, a mixed-use project, and a single family. Uh, again, these are just prototypes. Every project is obviously a little bit different where you're located within the city. But we just wanted to kind of give, uh, an updated overview of what fees sometimes come into play that the city imposes. Uh, the next one is local processing and permit procedures. Um, again, they just wanted to analyze the discretionary entitlement impacts. Um, as now the vast majority of housing projects should be falling under the administrative approval process, really one of the last, um, universal kind of discretionary processes would be ARB. So we added additional language to program one B about ARB streamlining, the language that we intend to, you know, put forth for our review. And this kind of leads into SB three thirty, SB thirty-five's compliance. Uh, currently, the city is not, um, does not need to fall under SB thirty-five, but we, uh, expect we will in the future. So program one B would be, um, establishing objective design standards. Um, and again, the, the program one A is the whole entire streamlining of all of our discretionary approvals, moving housing, uh, housing projects down to the more AA level, except for the few circumstances in the downtown, uh, where DRs would still be required. Um, for code enforcement and the next one on the next page, uh, on and off-site improvements, uh, we will be bringing forth, um, additional language regarding, uh, local ordinances that have passed, uh, specific to Santa Monica. We tried to get that for you for this date, um, but working with Building and Safety and Public Works, that is two pieces of information that we are hoping to have for, uh, for you to see before this coming Friday. Um, but we did add, uh, per the direction from the commission, we added in, you know, just an acknowledgement about the high-rise, uh, definition of the safety code, uh, to acknowledge that that is a constraint on housing, however, it is for the public safety, uh, public safety requirements. Um, again, the on and off-site improvements, that language will be coming to you, uh, hopefully shortly, in the next couple of days. Um, going on to constraints for housing of persons with disabilities, this kind of groups in with that housing program of we will be updating all of our housing and special needs, uh, land uses. Uh, for reasonable accommodation, though, we just kind of added in some more past experience showing that we have never denied a reasonable accommodation for persons with disability. Uh, and then for group homes for seven or more, and also our definition of household, uh, that will be reviewed under that new program two G, making sure that there's no inadvertent, um, language that is restricting, uh, unintentionally peoples with disabilities through our household definition. Uh, the next item was, uh, analysis between the building, the time between an entitlement, a planning entitlement, a building permit. Uh, this information was already provided, uh, it was actually the very last page. So we just kind of provided a little clarifying information, kind of calling it out a little bit better. Um, the la- uh, I think this is my last slide, but for farm workers, uh, we added in a new section about farm workers. Uh, specifically, uh, HID, HCD wanted us to acknowledge farm worker housing needs in the county, uh, not necessarily just in Santa Monica. So some, some data regarding LA County's farm worker needs and farms was included. And we highlighted some of Santa Monica's housing, uh, current housing options that could support these, this housing need. And lastly, uh, number eight was just, um, kind of really listing out more than just one or two of our nonprofit housing providers in the assessment. Uh, so that was actually added to appendix B and really was just listing some of those additional entities. Uh, and with that, I'm going to hand it back to Rachel to discuss, uh, housing program revisions.
Okay, um, so one of the comments that, uh, HCD had was with regards to rezoning. Um, they basically said that if we have a shortfall of sites to accommodate, um, housing at the very low-income levels, then we need to rezone. Um, so that rezoning is encompassed in program one F, which, um, addresses the downtown only. Um, and that, uh, in program one F, we've provided and added the proposed FAR and height tables, um, for each of the tiers. Um, keep in mind too, this is the only area in the city where we are proposing to keep the three tiers. Um, the variety of reasons for that one is that we can't downzone. Um, and so the tiers, uh, have been, uh, provide, the tier, um, FARs and height have been provided with the off-site affordability requirements and onsite affordability requirements provided in that table. Um, and the, uh, affordable housing is really geared towards moderate and eighty percent AMI units, so that we could get more of a mix of moderate income units in the downtown. Um, and also in, uh, the rezoning is also encompassed in new program one J, which was formerly four B. We've decided to move that program up since it really addresses goal one, which is the production of housing. Um, so for that program, we've added the proposed FAR and height tables. Um, you'll see that we've eliminated tiers for housing projects in, uh, all zones across the city. Um, and so we've, uh, we've, we've added those tables in there as well. Next slide. The next program is program one A, which addresses by right approval for housing projects. Um, this is already, um, done, being done through an interim ordinance. And so, uh, program one A would make this permanent. And, uh, per HCD's comments, we're, um, adding the clarification language that projects, housing projects for at least twenty percent affordable housing onsite will be eligible for by-right, uh, ministerial review. Um, this is implied, but we just wanted to make sure HCD understood that. So we've, uh, we've added that language in there. Um, and then for, uh, replacement housing requirements, state law requires that if a project site is, or if a site that is on our SSI has, um, residential units currently or have had residential units in the past five years that have been deemed restricted as affordable or rent-controlled or low-income, um, there needs to be a program in place to replace those units. Um, hence why we've added program three A to address the state requirement. Um, and this, this, uh, this is, uh, in compliance with state law, of course. Next slide. Um, the next program is program two B, which addresses the city-owned sites. Um, sorry, I'm sorry, this is a program two B, which addresses the right of first offer, um, ordinance. Um, and, uh, actually, I'm sorry, this is a typo. This is the city-owned sites. And it basically commits the city to planning for a minimum of eighteen hundred units across all the city-owned sites. We've also included a timeline to issue at least one RFP for the development of, um, at least one city-owned site by December of two thousand and twenty-three. So, um, in accordance with, uh, HCD's requirement that we have a milestone. Next slide. Um, the next program is program two F, which addresses the affordable housing, um, production program. Um, we've added clarification that the city has, uh, we've already adopted basically policies to, um, really, uh, increase our housing production or affordable housing protection, that we will continue prioritizing local funding through a housing trust fund. Um, that, that's laid out in our housing trust fund plan. And so it has spending commitments, strategies, and ongoing outreach. So we've simply added clarification on the program two F. Next slide. Uh, program one B is streamlining the architectural review. HCD felt like, um, that their current ARB findings are problematic in the sense that they may not be objective. Um, so revised program from B to include, um, program language stating that, um, that the, the design process is meant to be objective in the sense that it does not hinder, um, it does not hinder, uh, a housing project to move forward. We cannot reduce density or deny a housing project, um, in the context of an ARB approval. Um, and so we've also added a language that the design review findings will be revised to provide greater objectivity and certainty. Next slide. Program one D, uh, speaks to, um, eliminating and, um, reducing parking requirements. Um, HCD basically said that we needed to commit to actual modifications rather than use, using the word explore. So we've changed language and we've added a commitment that we would provide reduced parking rates for all housing projects based on, um, for the current parking overlay one rates. Um, if you don't know the parking overlay one rates, um, those are reduced rates and, um, as compared to the rest of the city. Um, previously, the program had limited the, uh, reduction of parking requirements only in transit priority areas. Um, with this program language, this new program language, it would basically apply to all housing projects across the city. And so, um, this is for ease of implementation, um, so that it can just, um, be implemented easier rather than having to look up site, um, whether or not, if it was within a transit priority area. Next slide. Uh, the next program, um, addresses, uh, affirmatively furthering fair housing. Um, HCD commented that, uh, the programs may not be sufficient for AFFH. And so, um, that the programs for D should be, should commit to meaningful and sufficient actions to overcome patterns of segregation. And so we've, uh, we've revised program four D, um, with new language to state, uh, you know, to really highlight our, our proposal that, uh, additional ADUs would be allowed in, uh, R1 neighborhoods. Currently, um, state law permits, um, one ADU, one J ADU, and an R1 parcel. And so we would allow, we would be increasing the number of ADUs allowed by an additional one, um, provided that it be, um, rent-controlled. And so we've, uh, modified the language to reflect that. Um, we've also added a reference to SB nine, um, which may further increase housing choice in higher opportunity areas. And SB nine, of course, was just recently passed last week. Um, for, for, um, uh, a new program three J, um, this was added in to, uh, at, at the suggestion of HCD's, um, AFFH guidance, they had listed a number of actions that would further, uh, contribute to AFFA, to further, furtherly affirmative for, for their fair housing. And so, uh, we already do condo convert, we already restrict condo conversions. So we've just added that program to, so that we could highlight that we already do this. Next slide. The next, uh, housing program addresses low-income households, um, and, and potential at-risk, um, that are potentially at risk. Um, and so program three C, uh, they wanted us to add the commitment that we would notice residents and owners of at-risk, uh, housing units, um, of the potential conversion dates, um, coordinate with specific entities for potential purchase and, and seek funding assistance. Um, we already implement these actions, however, we've revised the language to include this language in program three C. Next slide. Um, and then the next one is, uh, talks about, next section talks about quantified objectives. HCD wanted us to include a conservation objective, um, by income group. Um, however, we, uh, the city, of course, is, has limited resources and staff and we can't commit to any specific conservation, uh, number. Um, however, we've added in a conservation number that reflects the projects that are already in progress, which there really is only one. So we've added that number in. Next slide. Uh, additionally, they want an expansion of how the public outreach and the public participation that occurred during the housing element process. So we've expanded that discussion in chapter one. Next slide. And lastly, they just provided a, a commentary stating that, you know, when we update our housing element, it does trigger the need for other updates such as the safety element. And so we, this, as we spoke last time, we acknowledged this and, um, efforts to update the safety element and the loose will be forthcoming. Next slide. Um, so the rest of the revisions that you see in the housing elements, um, has to do with just moving things from program language to policy. Um, this was done because, you know, when we go back to HCD and do our reporting every year, um, it's hard to report on things that are policy, things that are like explore, um, encourage. And so all of that language that was previously in the programs have been moved to policies. Um, and this includes, you know, things like the sustainable, healthy communities was converted to a policy since, um, this is not something that could really be measured and reported to HCD. Um, and so the same goes for the, the other, um, program languages. Next slide. Um, and then, uh, as I discussed before, program four B, which addressed the development standards, was moved to program one J. And then program seven C was moved to program three I because it really addressed more of the displacement, um, so it fit better under the appropriate goals. Um, as, uh, David mentioned before, um, because of everything that is going on and, um, planning commission's direction that we, um, do condition, uh, do additional outreach with the rent control board, housing commission, and the working groups, um, a lot of our timelines, um, for implementing red line amendments to the zoning ordinance and the plans have been pushed out. And so you'll see that we've pushed out the deadlines to at least mid-two thousand and twenty-two. Um, this also accounts for, you know, the necessary ninety-day review HCD will need to certify the housing element once we get council to adopt on October fifteenth. Next slide. And, uh, that is it, um, for our presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel and Ross and David. So commissioners, um, do you think it would be helpful for them to have any of the slides up as we're going through this? Would that help trigger your, what we're talking about? Okay, same here. Okay, so let's just, Commissioner Landry.
Chair, I was just wondering, could we take, if we, I believe it's one public commenter, could we take the public comment now so that if we have questions based on the comment, we can work those in?
Yeah, that, yeah, thank you for the, that was the plan. Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, our first and only caller is Ken Kutcher. Hi, Ken, you're now live in the meeting and you have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you, Melissa, and thank you, commissioners. Good evening. Um, I'd like to speak briefly to the letter that I submitted this morning, which commented on appendix E of the housing element, dealing with the constraints analysis required as an important part of, of housing element law. And the importance of a thorough constraints analysis was certainly a focal point of some of HCD's comment letter, uh, on the city's draft that was submitted on July first. And the state highlighted at least seven categories of constraints analysis as to, uh, local governmental constraints. Um, and I focused on the first six of those seven categories. Uh, it's critically important to note that state law requires cities not only to identify these constraints, but also to demonstrate local efforts to remove governmental constraints that hinder the locality from meeting its share of the regional housing need. Um, Paula Larmour of my office has submitted a roadmap of, uh, our suggestions associated with revisions to the housing element programs, which would help demonstrate those local efforts to remove governmental constraints. Um, I'm not going to have a chance to go through all of those comments. I'll highlight a few of the, uh, constraints that, uh, I attempted to identify. Those would be the active ground floor design and use criteria. Uh, among those, the concern about, and you've heard this a number of times, the sidewalk adjacency of the ground floor, um, the daylight plane, uh, setbacks when you're across, um, an alley from a residential zone. Um, there's also, of course, There's also, of course, significant importance to the community benefit, which upon elimination of the tier system, at least as we saw in the draft red lines that came to your last meeting, there could be an intention to apply all of those community benefits to housing projects. Those include the bedroom mix requirement, the subsidy requirement for employees and residents who reduce their use of vehicles. And also of concern is the city's frankly begrudging interpretation and application of the state density bonus law in commercial and mixed-use zones. And we would encourage the city to embrace rather than shirk those responsibilities under the state density bonus law. Another constraint is the prohibition against residential units on the ground floor. I know the commission has given direction on that several times, and we hope that when the more detailed revisions come to you, that those are addressed. And I think I'll conclude my remarks at this point.
That's actually three minutes, Ken.
There you go. Well, thank you very much, and happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Commissioner, I'd share with.
Mr. Kutcher, I have a question for you. I believe it was your letter that talked about the differences between the definition of a housing project in the city versus the state. And assuming was your letter, would you opine a little more on that? What what do you see are the major differences and what are the what are the problems with that that you're seeing?
Yeah, Paulus' comments and my comments both address those. There are, in my big picture concern is that the city's attempting to, seems to be attempting to deviate from the definition statewide, and I question whether or not that is something that the city can do lawfully. The particulars include the difference between maximum 25% versus the maximum 33% of the commercial, the limitation on the ground floor commercial uses to neighborhood serving as opposed to whatever is allowed in the district. And, you know, I think those are, those are the the general concerns that that we have.
Can I push you a little harder on what is the problem with the two-thirds versus the the 30, the two-thirds versus the 25%? I mean, obviously, I guess the 25% we end up with a little more housing, but is it, you need, you need the other portion?
Yeah, the question is, is it, you have projects where you don't get a project because it's not going to be financially feasible without more ground floor commercial? And and that's the question. I think this assumes and dictates what the maximum can be, which is lower than what is allowed by the state.
Okay. All right, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that with you.
Sure, appreciate it.
Ken, hold on. Commissioner Landis.
No, I I had a similar question. So, Mr. Kutcher, is it your position that a a housing project that is at least two-thirds housing is entitled to all protections under state law? And that that's where the protections start? So Santa Monica wants to encourage 75% housing, that's great, but my understanding is that you're saying that there was those protections start once the project crosses two-thirds? Is that, is that your position?
That's right, that's right. And would love, hey, I'd love to maximize how these, we talked, as one of my comments is, to eliminate the requirement of broad ground floor commercial. There's some projects that's going to work for and some that might not work for. But you're absolutely right, Commissioner Landis, about what the concern is and what I think the the state's response would be.
And while we have you, you have alluded, or I believe, it may have been you, it may have been Ms. Larmour, to the concerns about the 55-foot definition of a high-rise versus the 75-foot definition of a high-rise. The staff report indicated that they were kind of noting that we had raised this, but a shucks, there's nothing we can do. And the Planning Commission had, in fact, I believe, made a request that this be considered outside the seismic area at the very least, last week's earthquake being kind of a reminder that we do need to give the considerations in mind. Do you want to expand on that a little bit, just for our clarifications as to whether or not that, to what extent that is a constraint?
Yes, you know, that statewide, there's a, the basic standard is 75 feet for the thresholds for a high-rise, and that's codified in state law. Localities are allowed to deviate if they adopt the reasons for doing so. Santa Monica did deviate after the Northridge earthquake and adopted the 55-foot standard, you know, 25, whatever, years ago. And there's been a lot of amendments to the building code and other safety requirements that have gone on in the last 25 years. The idea that this has been readopted and readopted and without serious visitation, I think, is of concern. I certainly want to protect the public and the safety of the public. I know the commission feels the same way, but also I'd like to hear from technical experts about whether or not that deviation is is really warranted in Santa Monica in 2021.
And to my knowledge, the Northridge earthquake refers to an earthquake that took place in addition to Santa Monica and the city of Los Angeles. What is the city of Los Angeles's definition of a high-rise, 55 or 75?
I believe it's 75, although, you know, to be frank, I don't do very much land use work in the city of Los Angeles, so I, I can't speak as an expert on that. You've got other commissioners could dress that up.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner Lambert.
I just want to clarify, Ken, because I think you know the answer to this, that Culver City and Beverly Hills both have 75 feet, right?
Correct.
And they're theoretically as impacted by earthquake on the west side as we are.
That's right.
So that back to the state definition of a housing project, we got a letter from the Boys and Girls Club asking us to expand the non-residential definition to community services like the Boys and Girls Club, for example. Would increasing the non-residential floor area to the state's definition help such projects?
Yes, it certainly would. I know, and I I haven't actually read that comment letter, but I've, I'm familiar with it, and I know that, among other things, you know, part of the Boys and Girls Club's concern is the need to probably have two floors, including some offices and, you know, a gymnasium, and making sure there's enough space for their use. And I certainly don't think the city would want to prevent that from happening while at the same time figuring out how to accommodate housing on that site, which would be a great site for that.
So basically, what what they're asking, and I think it's a good idea, is that we expand the definition of non-residential use and then we go to the state definition of floor area, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Ken.
All right, since Commissioner Lambert went there, Mr. Kutcher, it strikes me that the that the letter about the Boys and Girls Club is equally applicable to the kinds of considerations we'd be looking at with encouraging congregations primarily in the R zones to be building housing, since one of the incentives for them is that they would be able to gain ground floor, second floor expansions of their own non-residential programming that is still, that is still not fully commercial in the sense of, you know, running, you know, creative offices on the ground floor down there. Do you have any thoughts on how that, those issues, would it be sufficient to do what Commissioner, what you and Commissioner Lambert discussed, or do you think we need to kind of broaden the applicability there so that maybe as we solve the problem for the Boys and Girls Club, we're also solving the problem for the congregations? Since it looks a lot similar, it may not only be childcare, it might also be, you know, nonprofit offices or, you know, closed offices, not retail ones, or other types of congregational non-residential programming? That could look a lot like Boys and Girls Club nonprofit program.
Right, no, I think you, I think you bring up a good point, and that that's, you know, an additional area that could be addressed. And in the residential zones, it is different because, of course, they're in the multifamily zones. And if you're going to get the religious congregations to be on board with redevelopment, I think they'll certainly want to have those options available to them. You know, I think of some of the development that's happened that we've offered pro bono work for with respect to St. Monica's campus, and, you know, their their needs there, and if housing could happen above some of those kinds of uses, that would be certainly, I think, some incentive for those religious congregations to take on that responsibility.
Okay. And then my last question, and with apologies to my colleagues on the commission who are in the housing business one way or another, particularly as consultants or as attorneys, do you think it would be fair to say that by eliminating constraint, these, by minimizing these kinds of special constraints on the housing production process, that we'd actually be increasing transparency in the housing production process in Santa Monica, and also making it less necessary to a certain extent for projects to go to lawyers and, you know, look for creative workarounds that don't always get fully, fully aired out in in public hearings? That we'd be actually making the process fairer for everyone and more transparent for everyone? I know this is your bread and butter and some of my coffee.
At the risk of.
At the risk of, exactly.
Some of, some of my own self-interest, but, yes, I absolutely think that, you know, a more streamlined, transparent process that someone can pick up, whether it's an architect or another trained professional, to look at and understand the code without all the nuances, everybody would be better off.
So I'm gonna, like I said, I'm gonna start off by going through the staff report, and I will be referring to the letters and numbers that are in the staff report. So for those of you who are following along at home, which is everyone, most everyone, that's how I'll be referring to them, I'm just looking for my notes here. And again, if there's a program that you want to talk about and we don't, you don't figure out where it is, and the staff report will get to it at the end. Okay, so starting with A, which is housing needs resources and constraints. Number one is affirmatively furthering fair housing, and the first is about fair housing enforcement and outreach. Does anybody have anything on that? Commissioner Landis.
Thank you. So I, this goes to some instructions that we thought we'd given a few weeks ago, and I really want to, I want to highlight this, and I don't want to say this over and over again, so if we can clear it now, it would be better. I am concerned about the slippage in date that we've seen throughout the housing element process. And I just want to reiterate, what I understood that we had asked from staff was that they bring the housing element, not, you know, not the red line, not a lot of programming, that they bring these issues to the Rent Control Board and to the Housing Commission before October 12. And that the, only the density bonus issues and the mods and waivers would go to this housing production task force. I believe we'd talked about bringing back the housing preservation task force for some issues, but I'm concerned, and I want, I would like to just say this one time and not repeat myself as we go through every program and plan, that there was some misunderstanding about what we expected, what we wanted staff to do, and I don't see why it should cause that much slippage. So if it would be possible to have staff address that early in the conversation, I think that would be super helpful.
Can I just add something to what Sean just said? We're not submitting just mods and waivers to the production committee, we're submitting FAR and height, because I want to get design and industry input on the FARs and the heights that were proposed to see what they're going to look like once they're built.
Okay, but you want that done before October 12, right?
No, well, I think, actually, well, my my suggestion is to put most of those in the zoning code anyway, so they would be looking at the red lines, not the housing elements.
Yeah, and I would add to that, that my understanding was actually that, or my intention, I don't know what everyone else's intention was, my intention was that the zoning code amendment would go selectively before the rent control board and housing board.
That's exactly what, that was what we said.
Not the housing element because of the timing constraint.
That's what we said.
Okay, I'm just a little concerned that it resulted in a six-month delay, including to some ordinances that nominally expire on December 31, so.
So let's, can we take that as two separate issues, though? There is one issue, which is the zoning code amendment. And so we talk about, I think it makes sense for us to talk to the timing about that. And the second is what was the intention of this commission? So Rachel, do you want to respond, and then we can take those in order?
Yeah, I mean, our understanding was that the red line changes to the zoning code and the plans would go forward towards Rent Control Board, Housing Commission, and the production groups for their further review, and that's why the implementation strategies timelines got pushed out. I mean, we simply, you know, given everything, you know, that's timeline that we're already on, we have to submit to council by the, you know, we have to be at council by the 12th and 13th. We just don't, simply don't have time or the enough hours of the day even, even if we wanted to, to simply go to all of those commissions and working groups to present this housing element to them. I mean, I think, I think they're all, you know, we've gone to them before, they were in broad agreement about our strategies and our concepts. We presented them with our concepts, and so our, our intention was really to bring forth the zoning code amendments and the plan amendments to, to those commissions and boards.
So Rachel, let me ask you two questions. One is, I heard you say during the presentation that one of the reasons the date had slipped, or maybe this is something Jane told me today, was, well, number one, that we said we want to do the housing element first and the text amendment second. But that she said something about, well, we wanted to wait the 90 days until they've done the review of the housing element. But when we last met, you all were ready to push all of those amendments forward without waiting for any feedback from HCD? Not any feedback, but feedback of the updated housing element? So what changed there? And why?
That was, sorry, that, that, our, that was actually based on our understanding of PC's direction, was that you guys had wanted to wait for HCD to certify the housing element before we moved forward with the red line changes. That was our understanding. So if, if we're, if we're incorrect, you know, greater clarification would be, would be great for us so that we could better coordinate our schedule.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So Commissioners, can I hear from you as to what, well, I think we heard from Rachel, it's not feasible to go to the board before council. So can I hear some discussion on timelines, that whether you want to do it, you want them to be brought before us, before or after HCD weighs in on the final housing element? Commissioner Fresco, and then I'd share with.
You did.
Nina.
Sorry, that part was hidden behind other documents. It does seem like the changes that, sorry, I totally lost my train of, oh, yeah. There's really straightforward changes that were in our plans that we just really wanted to do, that were in those red lines, and now they're not going to happen until December, and that just seems crazy. And so if there's a way that things can happen concurrently, I mean, staff might spend a lot of time figuring out how to tier these things based on those kinds of complications, but it just seems crazy to wait. And I, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what the answer is, but maybe, you know, these boards and commissions can also follow this process with us and do it with us, and write us letters and tell us what they think, and maybe we can move this along a little. us what they think. And maybe we can move this along a little. It just seems like that staff's understanding of our direction just caused a huge delay that we probably can't afford.
Well, and perhaps, you know, the solution is a hybrid approach, that there are some things that can be done fairly quickly, like the extension of the IZO and some other things, whereas maybe some of the more complicated things we haven't really talked about yet, or that we haven't really had time to get input would be a little later, like March. High Chair Reed.
Yeah, I think, I think where I came from last time was there was concern that with the, with the letter we got from the state, we weren't really sure how many changes we were going to see in the zoning code and based on the housing element. So that's why, to me, it made sense to put a pin in the zoning code updates until we really understood how we were going to respond. I think staff came back with a report this time, which said, there really aren't a ton of changes we need to make to get compliant. So assuming we can continue down that path and tonight we don't pick that apart, I think there is a way to do a hybrid approach. But I thought we had to get our feet underneath us to make sure that the housing element wasn't going to change dramatically before we started going down a path of changing zoning codes that didn't reflect the housing element. So that's, that's where I was at. And it also makes sense that the boards and commissions wouldn't comment on the housing element because we have such a time constraint and that they would, they would comment on the zoning update. Those are my comments.
And to be clear, I'm not suggesting a hybrid approach on the housing element. I'm suggesting a hybrid approach on the ordinance amendments. But Heidi, I see you are showing your face.
Just a quick reminder of how this discussion relates to the document that's before you this evening. So you saw some dates that are in the programs with respect to implementation. The city can certainly move forward before that timeframe. Those are deadlines that we would need to be demonstrating compliance with for purposes of, you know, the housing element implementation. So just to kind of put it in perspective with respect to what you're looking at this evening and what you will be recommending on Friday.
Thank you. Commissioner Raskin, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just, I concur with the hybrid approach. But you know, part of the reason why we wanted to pump the brakes a little bit is not necessarily so that the commissions could weigh in per se, but also so that the public could have more time to digest all this. And so I think that's an important consideration that we should weigh as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Landos?
Yeah, I mean, I would like to, I like a hybrid approach as well, but I'd like to specifically call out the extension of the IZO as, as an urgent priority and the resolution of the density bonus issues as an urgent priority. As, and I, and I, and I know that we want other groups to weigh in on height and FAR and things like that. That's going to take more public engagement. But I think if we can convene the housing production task force on the density bonus, a meeting that is about the density bonus and only the density bonus, that would be, that would be extremely helpful. And then we could right, get right back on the horse and move that through. I think that would be, that, that might be more doable. I also would observe at an August deadline relative to the schedule that this body and the planning and the council tends to take is a little bit of a weird deadline. And it might be helpful for us to think about a June 30 deadline rather than an, or a May, or a May deadline, rather than an August 1 deadline because of, because of summer timing. And I just, I just wanted to name that as we're thinking about the pace of the work.
Leslie?
I just have one final, I think having the production committee meet just solely in the density bonus program is a waste of their time. I mean, there really are a few of them who are, it's a very arcane issue. What I'm interested in hearing from the production committee is what they think about the FARs and the heights that were proposing and what they're going to look like if they're built that way. And that's across the board. It's not just density bonus.
Okay, so let's, Ms. Raffanabonardi, do you have anything before I suggest a straw poll? You're on mute.
No, go ahead. If I have issues that come up, I can bring them in later.
So I'd like to say, can we do a straw poll? And I think we can do by show of hands of taking a hybrid approach. All in favor of that, raise your hand. Okay, great. And then specific things that we want to see come, Rachel, do you need, do you have something?
Yeah, I was gonna say that, you know, in order for us to do state density bonus, we do need the height and the FARs because that's what they're built on top of.
I agree. I agree. So I would like to suggest that the two things that happened before the end of the year that we know right now, and there may be other things as we go through tonight, are density bonus, including heights and FARs. And to that end, I know we're going to get there. And there are some places where they show up in the text. And so I'm going to suggest that essentially we save use of the minimum, subject to additional input, and then the IZO. So does anybody want to vote on those two items separately?
Can you just say that again? I didn't.
So the IZO would be handled before the end of the year? And the density bonus, including FAR and height, would be handled before the end of the year?
Is he for the end of this year?
I'm sorry, before the end of this year, yes. So can we do a straw poll on both of those? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, so that is unanimous. Okay. Does anybody, thank you, Sean, does anybody else have anything they want to say about fair housing enforcement and outreach? And the red lines in the, okay, let's move on to integration and.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question? So, so, and this is, again, I'm going to just try to ask these upfront and not ask them over and over again. There are a number of, there's some fair housing legislation that is pending in the legislature, along with other legislation that is pending. Some of it's been signed SB 8, 9, and 10. But I think the governor has not had a signing ceremony for the affordable housing and fair housing piece legislation that passed. What is the staff's, I mean, we're going to be dealing with this by October 12. You know, council's going to deal with it on October 12. We're going to deal with it on Friday. How is staff responding to the impact of that legislation on our housing element? Because some of those changes are going to affect the programs that are before us.
So I'm going to answer that. We can only, well, two things. One, we can only address what is current law and what we know is law. Okay. If you have, I'm going to suggest, and so when HCD staff talks to our staff and they ask about SB 9, HCD basically was like, we're not really sure yet. We don't know how to handle it yet. We're working on it. So I'm going to suggest if you have particular changes in language that you want considered, or bills that you want to be mentioned, that you just say that specifically.
So for example, in this item, fair housing in particular, I, we're expecting the governor to sign AB 787, which encourages the acquisition of rent controlled housing to be converted to deed restricted affordable housing. I think if we had a program to encourage that, that would assist us in meeting some of our fair housing goals because we encourage that anyway.
Then I would like you to say, I suggest we have a program.
I would suggest a program, no, but that's my point. So I would like to suggest a program on that effect. And I would like to ask staff to study, because I don't yet know, I don't fully understand the implications of SB 728, to assess whether or not the acquisition, the acquisition of affordable housing by nonprofit providers under SB 728 would facilitate our achieving or would advance, would affirmatively further fair housing. So I'm interested in AB 787 and SB 728 in seeing if those will help us achieve our fair housing goals. And if so, in creating programs to encourage that.
But let me ask a question, Sean. If they are in law, don't we have to do that? Or are they often like, we can't?
They're like, they're like, you know, we can do it, right? But if we, I think we would want to ask the question, is the housing, you know, it, it goes to the consultations that we need. Should the housing trust fund be directed to acquisition of naturally occurring affordable housing? Or should it be used for a production of new, you know, 100% affordable housing? I think those are questions that need to be weighed.
Commissioner Fresco and then Commissioner Landos.
Isn't it kind of, first of all, inappropriate for us to write things about laws that aren't passed yet? And B, isn't it kind of hard for us to put programs that we commit to in our housing element that are based on money in our housing trust fund that we haven't figured out how to get yet?
Amber. And then High Chair Reed.
I just want to point out, Sean, as you know, 787 is only a moderate income housing bill from the standpoint of counting toward RENA. So a nonprofit is not going to use 787 to acquire existing buildings. If they acquire low income buildings, they won't apply to RENA. So 787 really is kind of moot in terms of nonprofit acquisition.
Commissioner, High Chair Reed.
Well, so I think this is helpful, Sean brought this up, because I mean, in reading through the documents, you know, I really got focused on this kind of the segregation issues and the areas of affluence. And it made me think that we really weren't doing enough in those areas. And, and, and I don't have a solution because I didn't like what we proposed before. But I, I didn't have a solution. Maybe though, you know, something that Sean said, or Commissioner Landos said, we can latch on to, which is maybe we should be pointing our housing trust money towards buying up some of these units in the high affluence areas, or at least proximate to them, that there would be some multifamily in that area. But I really, I don't know the solution, but I really feel like we need to make some movement towards addressing these areas of influence. Because then you look at other things, we talked about the 10 freeway coming through and the Belmar area. Those were all areas that got basically destroyed so other people's lives could be protected. So don't have a solution, but I think Sean might be on to something to help us move that along. And I'd love to hear a little more discussion on it.
Chair? Okay, yeah, your mic is off. I've basically spent all day and the last year and a half thinking about this, as you know. And I think staff's idea of allowing an extra ADU that's deed restricted, is this like programs? Am I not supposed to talk about this now? I don't really, okay.
Right now, if there are programs you want to address that are affirmatively fair housing, let's do it.
Okay, this is like, really, really important to me and my heart. And I just feel like we have to really do some serious stuff in this area. And I think this idea of ADUs that are deed restricted and allowing an extra one in R1 areas is a great idea. And we should totally do it. I'm not convinced it's going to yield a hell of a lot. But the thing that is the most important to me personally, is this idea that somehow everything we do to affirmatively further fair housing has to yield a ton of affordable units. And I don't think that's necessarily true. Sometimes we just have to get rid of things that aren't fair. And I've just felt really a lot, speaking with my beloved fellow commissioners, as well as other people in the community, friends, family, people I love, that there's this idea that this is kind of a new theoretical idea in the current time that R1 is based on this segregation idea. And it's not. And I'm going to bend your ear a little because I actually picked out direct quotes from newspapers in 1922, when the city was creating this zoning ordinance for this city for RR1. And they talk about what they want to do. And I mean, to me, this, reading these articles was transformative for how I thought about it. And I've been trying for months to transform everybody else. So.
Do you have?
I do. Let me just, you have to, please be patient with me. So this is from the Santa Monica Outlook, December 29, 1921. "The whole purpose of the zoning ordinance is to accord with the wishes of the majority of the property owner in establishing distinct districts based on public health, safety, and welfare. Of course, as an incremental result, residents' property values as such will be protected." Have to remember, protected is a big dog whistle word. And today, when, you know, we have a lot of really liberal people, those words, safety, welfare, and protection of property rights linger in people's minds. And they mean something different to people today than they did then. But they're actually justifications for these policies. So then they had a guy, a consultant, his name is Charles Chaney. He came to town to talk to people and he went to the Santa Monica Bay Women's Club in September 1922. This is actually after the ordinance was passed and he was explaining what to do moving forward. And this is a quote, "Charles H. Chaney's approval of rape robbing last evening at the women's clubhouse where he spoke on city planning is the sensation in business and realty circles today. His approval came in reply to questions as to whether it is practical to attempt to keep the colored races from any particular section of the city." So then we move on to this period, right before we passed our ordinance, when a group of African Americans proposed a bathhouse. When plans of, this is dated June 8, 1922, "When plans of a Negro Syndicate in Los Angeles to establish an amusement park at the foot of Pico Boulevard, Santa Monica, were made public, eighteen property owners of Venice Ocean Park in Santa Monica met and formed a temporary organization, which they called the Santa Monica Bay Protective League, to combat the move. This organization met with such pronounced success that it was unanimously decided last night to make it a permanent institution, after adopting 'Keep the Bay District a White Community' as its slogan." And the tool that they used to stop the bathhouse was they pushed city council to adopt the zoning ordinance. Before it was ripe, they didn't have everything ready. So they just adopted the R1 zones in the city, north of Montana, and all of the north beaches, far south as Hollister, as R1. That was what they did that was so successful to keep the Bay District a white community.
Commissioner Fresco, I know there's.
I know, I just, I just have to make sure that I just have not been convinced that people really hear this. So this is what we've done. So I believe SB 9 is fine. And it's not, as everybody has said, because of property values, it's probably not going to be taken advantage so much in one part of town. And because of lot sizes, probably not so much in the other part where we have R1. And I know that we talked about this already, but I really think that upzoning certain cross streets through the R1 district and having some actual R2 that could result in real multi-unit housing to thread through that neighborhood is the fairest approach that we can use at this time. There aren't that many things. Either we have R1 or we don't. We either add housing or we don't. And I think we have to bite the bullet and go for it. It's not going to hurt anyone.
So I have, I do have one suggestion, which is, one of my ideas for this was that given the adoption of SB 9, so part of the thing, the way that SB 9 works is that if you are, and Heidi, correct me if I'm wrong, but I've been trying to digest it, but that basically, if you're doing a duplex, there's this requirement about demolition of more than 25% of existing walls. And that in order to be able to do that, you have to, the city has to have an ordinance. And so I'm going to suggest that the city has an ordinance that allows demolition of more than 25% of the exterior walls. of more than 25% of the exterior walls as part of program 4C, and that that happen either only in areas of influence, or all areas except for those which are essentially what we consider to be, as the tax is... I don't know if it's low income or in jeopardy of, you mean, basically, right, the Pico neighborhood and those neighborhoods.
I don't understand what you're talking about with the demolition ordinance. Can you explain what you're talking about better?
Yeah, so as I read SB9, it basically says that you cannot do a duplex if it would require demolition of more than 25% of the exterior wall. That's how I read the ordinance, that's how I read the law. So, but it also says, a city may adopt an ordinance that allows a duplex to occur with more than 25% demolition. So I am suggesting adding to the program that ordinance. Commissioner Lambert.
I would add something to that, and that is SB9 actually has a workaround for communities who don't want duplexes. And that is, the city can establish development standards that basically preclude building a duplex that's marketable. Meaning, they only have to have development standards that allow for at least an 800-square-foot unit, which is not what we're talking about. So I would add language that the development standard, because I can see R1 development standards going into place for duplexes. And that's going to limit the duplex size. So I would suggest that we add language that the development standard should allow for marketable units to be constructed as duplexes or fourplexes. You get all that? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Well, I don't think it's appropriate to match out the ordinance in the program. I think that's like...
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I don't, I don't want to see an ordinance adopted with development standards that makes a duplex not workable. And I can see that happening. So we don't want, I'm not, I'm not saying...
I think we should...
Nina, wait a minute. I'm not saying what the standard should be, I'm just saying the standard should not preclude the development of a duplex that is marketable, given the areas being built in. I'm not saying what they should be. I could, I could see that coming.
Yeah, but marketable and feasible, we're going to be held to a very wiggly, sliding, non...
Here's the other, here's the other thing we could do. That a duplex unit should be no less than 1,000 square feet. That's what the ADUs are now.
Okay.
Elise, does that make sense to you?
I mean, it makes sense, but I would want to know from HRNA if that...
No, none of it's workable, none of it's feasible. But it's really not...
We don't have to say that in the program. Well, we don't have to say that in the program for you later. And I feel like we're making...
Nina, my prediction is the city council will adopt development standards to make duplexes in R1 not workable. That's my prediction.
Well, when we make our... Let's not do that.
Commissioner Fonda Benardi.
Yeah, well, you know, the object of the whole exercise is to create housing. And when you look at the way the SCAG maps out the affordability of ADUs, they're actually quite affordable, when you look at their distribution, their financial distribution. So we can already do this, we can already do 1,000-square-foot ADUs. I believe we actually should do 1,200-square-foot ADUs, but that, you can put that aside. So what I'm saying is, I don't think we need to rearrange the R1 universe to do something we're already doing today, that's perfectly legal, as it already happened. It's not generating a lot of resistance, it's working, it's producing housing quickly and cheaply, and it doesn't require mega bucks and a lot split and all those other things that that implies. Because again, we're not trying to do housing theater, we're trying to do real housing. We don't want it to look great, we want it to be great and fast. And so I think we're already there, I don't think we need to monkey with SB9.
I have to respectfully disagree with you. I don't think ADUs are used for real housing. I think people build them, I think maybe their kids come and stay there, I think maybe, you know, I think a small percentage is, or are rented out. That's my real concern. I mean, I love the idea, and if we could get people to rent them out, I would 100% be with you. I just don't think that helps. What? Commissioner Fonda Benardi.
Well, even if someone were to rent them to their kid, that means that frees up another unit that that kid would have to live in if they weren't staying in the ADU. So what's the problem? In other words, it's...
But that's, but that's the same argument about increasing density everywhere. When you increase density everywhere, it frees up a unit for someone to move. But we are going to take that position, which I agree with, and we have to take this off the board.
I'm not sure the housing escalator works that way, but we don't have to get into that today.
Commissioner Landers.
Thank you. Could I ask staff at this point, since we started talking about ADUs, it's, I had a list of questions, so we're checking them off slowly. How is it that we are out of compliance with the state on our ADU ordinance?
Great question.
The promised letter has not materialized, I would like to know where we are out of compliance.
You and me both. It was a surprise to us, they only mentioned, I think, one in their comment letter about like, the existing space being converted. But then they're, they said they were writing an additional letter, and we've yet to receive that. So I, unfortunately, at this point, don't know either.
Okay, because, look, I think, my understanding, and I saw sort of an Alfred Chu tweet about this, that essentially AB 670, I don't know if we're fully consistent with AB 670, but I thought we were in terms of, and that's consistent with the city's program to allow a second ADU, you know, if we want to, which it sounds like we do. I think the, the question, look, I've said it before, I'll say it again, I think the loss of AB 1401 is doing more harm to our ability to provide real housing than the passage of SB9 or SB10. Because, given Santa Monica's unique situation. So if we're talking about the way SB9 interacts with ADU law, you create an either-or situation. And I think, I understand Commissioner Fonda Benardi's position to be essentially, look, ADUs are easier and cheaper to build, if you build a second ADU for rental purposes, you can get rental income to a, you know, a retired person who's living on a property that they've held for a very long time. And if they've chosen not to sell, Prop 19 with its pluses and minuses obviously makes it easier for people to sell now, but still, some people are choosing not to do so. So it is a heck of a lot cheaper to build a second ADU than it is to split your lot and go from there. But I think to Commissioner Fresco's point, the notion of the divisible land is the, the thing, right, and this is to Commissioner Pastor's point, is the thing that will undo the legacy of the 1920s in creating racially-based restrictions in Santa Monica. So we're kind of caught between a symbolic rock and a practical hard place. I'm inclined to, as much as I might be inclined to agree with Commissioner Pastor, that such an ordinance permitting the demolition of more than 25% would be permitted, on a practical level, I believe that we're going to see more ADU production than we are going to, than we're going to see duplex production. So I would honestly like to go on both fronts. And while I'm speaking, I'm just going to bring up another program that I would like to see...
Wait, no, no, stop.
Yeah, don't do that? I'll stop there.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I, I am, I am going to admit that I was wrong about how we should go about this, because I feel like this is a very unfocused discussion, and that I think it would be better for us to go by program. So I propose that, so I may a culpa. So I, let's please take a straw vote on the, it could either be adopt an ordinance, or frankly, I think this is a situation where we could barely say, consider an ordinance, because it's such a new law. We haven't done the analysis on it, so I will amend my proposal to make a, consider adopting an ordinance that allows demolition more than 25%. Let's take a straw vote on that. Then let's go to what Sean is proposing, and then let's go through the program.
Well, I proposed a few things too.
Oh, yeah, and then, okay, so, let's, Nina, let me get back to you in a minute. Okay, let's start with consider 25%, more than 25% demolition for duplexes in areas of concentrated influence.
Chair Pastor? I'm sorry to interrupt. Just to avoid specifics of writing ordinances right now, and for a new law that we have yet to understand, may we provide some suggested language?
Yes, absolutely.
So, a program that could be, implement SB9 in a meaningful way that may include, but not limited to, allowing for demolition of existing structures to produce a duplex, and ensuring that housing units are feasible.
I love it. But I had suggested that it be in areas of concentrated influence, or that, reversely, that we exclude, like, Pico neighborhood. Well, maybe we don't. Never mind, maybe we don't, because maybe that gives homeowners, because SB9 can only be used by homeowners, not by developers.
Correct.
Maybe it gives people a...
That's only for lot subdivision. You can build a duplex and not be an owner occupant.
Are you positive about that? I don't think so.
I'm positive.
No, I think, I think Elise is right.
No, I don't think so. I think I'm right.
Of course you do.
I read the bill. Okay, so let's, let's, let's try... What?
Could we have staff look at it before Friday and come back with...
Well, this is exactly what staff said, that we... It's a new law, and staff should study it, and we shouldn't be putting things in our housing element about a law that staff hasn't studied. And they're busy writing a housing element right now.
Okay, let's, I'm going to cut the conversation up. I agree with you, Nina. Let's, let's vote on the, straw vote on what Rachel suggested.
I'm sorry, can we read that back one more time before we vote?
Sure. Implement SB9 in a meaningful way that may include, but not limited to, allowing for demolition of existing structures to produce a duplex, and ensuring that housing units are feasible.
Can I add a friendly amendment? And advances fair housing goals. Can we add and advances fair housing goals, so that, so that to the extent that the disagreement here about what the law really says, it can be implemented in a way that advances this question?
Under affirmatively furthering fair housing to start with.
Okay.
Can I, can I make a suggestion for even more, less specificity? What if we consider adapting SB9 to the unique housing parameter circumstances? And I just feel like we shouldn't be, I'll just vote against it. Never mind. I think it's just too specific for something we don't know anything about.
We've all read it, Nina.
Yeah, but just reading it once, you know, is just not sufficient.
Hi, Cherise, do you have anything before we...
I was just going to say, do we real, I know we want everything to be feasible and realistic, but this is more of a symbolic thing, and I think that added language of feasibility is a problem for me. I'd like to see it cut out, would that be a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Yeah. And let's vote.
Okay, can we take a straw poll, please? For those who agree with the language that staff repeated, taking out feasibility, raise your hand if you say yes. Okay, that's four to three, for the record. Okay, Sean, do you have a specific change to a program that you were talking about, or a proposal? And then, yeah, let me go on.
Okay, so the proposal that I want to make, and I want to do it in the spirit of what Rachel just suggested, which is, I will, I'll say this, I will try to say this as succinctly as possible. There is pending legis, there is existing legislation that moves the approvals of housing produced by the, our schools and our colleges to local approval and not state approval. There is also pending legislation, SB 330 of this year, SB 290, AB 306, that encourages the production of this type of housing. To the extent that this makes housing available for a wider range of income levels, and to people who work at Santa Monica but cannot access Santa Monica housing, I would like to propose that staff draft language to create a program to facilitate and streamline the approval of this type of housing. Because it's all zoned, because all of our, if it's a property that's owned by our district or our college, it may be on land that is not currently zoned for housing. So it will require some work. So I'd like to see a sentence in a program that acknowledges this, prioritizes it, and, and, you know, makes it a priority for us to streamline those approvals.
Okay, can I have a straw poll on that? All in favor, raise your hand.
I just, I have a comment. I'm getting concerned that we're having, like, a lot of things thrown in the bucket of streamlining, and somebody's going to suffer. We don't have the staff to streamline absolutely everything, and I'm just concerned that we're going overboard on this.
Okay, so then you should put down.
Can I respond to that quickly, though? My point is, the issue of what would stop the streamlining is the fact that those parcels are not zoned for housing. Because if they were zoned for housing, it would be really easy. So I'm not asking us to change our rules, I'm asking us to apply our rules to parcels that may not be zoned. I mean, practically, that's what I'm asking for. I'm not asking us to streamline everything out of, out of review existence. I'm just asking for us to make it a priority to build this house.
Sean, projects that are zoned for housing, they're coming in for ministerial review, take two years. So, I mean, let's think about that.
Okay.
And these parcels, it's not that they're not zoned for housing, they're not zoned at all.
Right, exactly.
If the school district wants to start thinking about that, they should start, you know, submitting things about zoning even before they start thinking of a project. I mean, you know...
Yeah.
I mean, I just think streamlining how we're going to plan our city is a really...
Let's take the vote again, so... Actually, I mean, we had a vote, vote was four to three.
Did we vote? Did we?
We did vote, but we can vote again for clarity. All in favor of Sean adding a program that, as Sean suggested, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Okay, so that passes. Okay, Commissioner Fresco, before we go to my program, do you have any specifications you would like to, to do straw polls on? Or you can also wait till we get to a program that's...
I would like to reiterate what I said, that not all fair housing changes to our ordinance are designed to create more housing. But I also think that some of the changes we make, we have to be courageous, and that some people might be unhappy before it happens, and they might realize it's actually fine after it happens. And so I propose that we consider upzoning certain cross streets in the north of Montana district as our two.
Okay. All in favor of the upzoning of certain cross streets to our R2? And our straw poll, please raise your hand. Okay, so that's two to zero, or two to, sorry, I can't count, five, so that does not pass.
If I may, for the record, it might be easier if we could start doing roll call votes. I'm sorry, it'll make it longer, but it would be easier for us, for the record, for roll call votes for your straw polls.
Oh, okay. Okay, let's move on to Program 1A. Yes, Sean?
Sorry, this is following Nina's motion, which I'm not prepared to support the upzoning, as I didn't. We had a discussion last time, I want to clarify it. There's some discussion about whether there are effective unit caps in R2, which is also, it's not quite R1, but there, and whether, have we clarified that we are removing those unit caps from R2 that make R2 effectively very difficult to build on? Now that SB8 has been signed, I'm not so worried about displacement issues. I think renters are protected much more than they were five minutes ago. But I would like to see those unit, those effective unit caps removed. I think it would help with housing equity north of Wiltshire.
I was going to bring up that issue as part of Program 1J.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Well, let's go by program, let's go by program.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so Program 1A. And I will start. I think that Program 1A needs to be modified such that that it really refers to objective standards and objective standards should be the same as defined by the Housing Accountability Act. Actually, I just lost my train of thought. Someone else go. Who wants to go?
What?
Vice Chair Reese and then Commissioner Lambert.
So this is the one too, I, I think we need to add in a little language about, it says code compliant and is code compliant, does that mean a density bonus project that needs an incentive? Which is what I'm hoping it means and I would like to make sure that we make a vote, a specific vote on that.
Okay, let's, I, yeah, that's where I was trying to go. Let's please do a vote on whether or not code compliant means that it is essentially an on-menu density bonus, right, that you are following and what, what about modification? If it needs a minor mod, is that code compliant or not?
That's what I was going to say. Can I read some language?
Yeah, but may I, may I interject just for a moment with respect to the, the language? That's fine. If you, just to make clear what the process is, if you do not meet, like for instance, the setback requirement, if you're proposing to go three feet into the setback, that is a request for a minor, more major modification or a waiver, whatever it qualifies for. The city goes through a discretionary process to determine whether or not you can get that, that differential. So it's fine if you want to streamline that way. I would just not recommend necessarily calling them code compliant. They can qualify for the streamlining, but there is that discretionary process that intercedes. So I would be concerned about that.
I think...
I, I would just, and I thought we had agreed on this before at the last meeting, that basically a project that needs a minor or a major mod or a waiver to be able to get that with staff and that that can be considered code compliant from the standpoint of the HAA.
Okay, so that's, so that's one piece of it, but then there's also the density bonus piece of it, which is...
No, I understand, I just, we should do both.
We want to vote on those separately, why don't we vote on the minor and major mods? Are, I guess the first question is, if you have minor or major mods, do they qualify for streamlining?
Right.
So, the proposal that I think I heard is minor or major mod could be approved by staff only and that that would be entitled to streamlining.
Right, exactly. And how the timing is, how the timing is that with the application, staff needs to figure it out.
And that 1A needs to be clarified in that regard.
Right.
So, I have a question. There are three places in our code where there's a daylight plane, meaning that you go up 25 feet or 20 feet on the sideline of the alley and you go up at an angle. It's basically designed to protect smaller buildings against the impact of larger buildings. And it's where the larger buildings abut residential districts, whatever they happen to be. And, you know, when I look at our new code and all of the new things, we're going to have a lot of big buildings abutting smaller buildings. So I would like to make sure that the code compliant aspect does not include violating the daylight plane in those situations where that occurs.
Is that a major or minor mod, Mario?
Well, it's supposed to be a 10%, you know, it's a, but I'm not sure how you would treat it. It has to be, you can give up 10% and, you know, I guess depending on how they're penetrating, maybe they're penetrating 10% into that, I don't know. It's, it's going to vary from situation to situation. I just want to protect the daylight plane when these different sized buildings are now colliding.
Is that a friendly amendment to the motion maker?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay. So can we, Commissioner Reese?
I'm sorry to do this, but I struggle with, I don't really quite understand where we're falling with, what falls into the category of a major modification and I'm a little bit uncomfortable with that. Can staff... I don't, Leslie, I understand that, that it's in the code. Do you have it in front of you?
No, but we discussed, no, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't, but we discussed with the last meeting.
Then don't cut me off if you don't have an answer.
So should we take...
Yeah, I was just going to answer Commissioner Reese's question on kind of what qualifies for a modification. That was, that was what you were looking for, right?
The major, I mean, the major one's what concerns me.
Okay, so major falls into only seven categories. You can reduce in a varying amount of percentages, setbacks, build-to-line, parcel coverage, height, ground floor height, landscaping and parcel lines. So daylight plane actually is not a current modification on the major nor the minor applicability list.
And across, is there an amount, a percentage for that?
Uh, yeah, so for example, like stepbacks can be, you can modify it up to 20% or five feet. Parcel coverage is 10%, so they all have kind of their own amount if you want. I can just quickly share you my screen so you can see the wording for yourself in the code. So here is the applicability of major modifications. Minor is very similar, but the percentages are smaller. And there might be one or two things, I can scroll up if you would like to see minor as well.
Okay, so I'm going to suggest we take this now in three pieces. One is minor, one is major, one is density bonus. Incentives and concessions.
That'd be great.
Okay, so...
And I have a point of information. Is daylight plane completely off the table to penetrate that daylight plane? You couldn't do it with a minor mod, you couldn't do it with a major mod. Is that...
That is, yeah, that is the correct. The only thing that we would currently allow to intersect a daylight plane is a permitted projection, but no building mass and there is no mind, there's no modification process to alleviate yourself from that.
That's what I wanted to know.
But they could still potentially do it as a concession or incentive. Sorry, just wanted to throw that out there.
Let's take minor mods first. All in favor, raise your, I guess we're doing roll call vote now.
Can you restate the motion for us?
I believe the motion is that projects that receive a minor modification will be considered to be, considered to comply with the objective standards and are entitled to streamlining and protections of the HAA. Based on our conversation from last week and the conversation we just, that's how I understand what's happening.
We've talked about it many times.
Yeah. Okay, let's vote.
Commissioner Fondabarnardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin? No, is that a no?
Sorry, that's a no.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Landriss?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reese?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, let's have the same motion but for major modifications. And I'm just reading you as you're on my screen, that's why I'm... Commissioner Fondabarnardi?
No.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
No.
Commissioner Fresco?
This is major modification, right?
Major modification, correct.
No.
Commissioner Landriss?
Yes.
Commissioner, or Vice Chair Reese?
No.
And then a vote, no.
This to me is like off-menu versus on-menu.
Yeah, me too. Okay. The same menu...
Can I get a clarification? Did we just vote that projects that need major modifications would not be considered covered by the Housing Accountability Act?
That is how we voted.
That's how we voted. Okay, good work, okay.
Um, okay, now. So I believe that state law, just a point of clarification. State law already says that if you get an incentive or concession, Heidi, tell me if this is wrong, that you still comply with the objective standard. And, but is that also the case for waivers or is that just incentives and concessions?
I think the law is a little less clear for waivers, but I, I was actually going to recommend that you all decide for clarity whether or not you think that if a waiver of the development standard is granted, whether or not, you know, it's still streamlining as well as your incentives and concessions.
Okay. Vice Chair Reese?
So, isn't it possible that you could have a waiver that exceeds your three, your three or four you're allowed, but could still be on our on-menu density, on our on-menu, on our menu of incentives?
Yeah.
I have a question. So. We just, okay, so as I understand it, we just voted to recommend that minor mods lead to streamlining, lead to HAA projections.
Right.
But major mods not do that.
Right.
But once, but we've, I mean, we've sort of had this fight over a number of years and I'm trying to understand, we're not saying that if the major mod is not granted, right? We're saying if the major mod is granted, it gets those protections. So, I, I just want to understand because, because there could be a major mod sitting on the incentives and concessions. If the policy point is, we only want to do these major mods because we want people to use the density bonus and so we want to push people toward using the density bonus to get more housing, I can see saying, no, you don't get these protections for a major mod without the density, without, unless you're using the density bonus. But if that's, and if that's our policy outcome, great, I'm, I'm on board with that. But if that's not what we're trying to accomplish, trying to understand the practical effect after a major modification has been granted, if we do not then give that project Housing Accountability Act protections, all, isn't all we're doing just sort of dragging the timeline? Like, why would we, why would we not want to protect that project? After we've granted them the major mod?
I mean, for me...
And the struggle, yeah.
For me, because the Housing Accountability Act applies to projects that comply with objective standards.
Okay.
And to me, some of the major mods are quite large deviations from the objective standard. And I do like the added incentive of doing a density bonus program, of doing density bonus and stuff. That's my opinion.
Okay, but, so let's, let's take for example, okay. So here, here's my challenge. My challenge is that if you're saying you want, you, you want those major mods essentially, what, what, they're going to land in front of the commission one way or another. I mean, at that point, I think. Because would they, would they land in front of the commission? I mean, we, we probably need to, we probably need to, I guess what I, where I'm getting at is if that's what we're going to do, we probably need to shrink the menu of what counts as a major mod. Like for example, ground floor, like ground floor height, which we've all said we want to kind of move away from, that's currently a major mod. We did it for Vons, I think. We probably would want to take that off the list of major mods since nobody seems to have, everybody wants to kind of make that easier to move through. So, and the reason, the reason why barriers we're throwing up by making the distinction between the minor and the major because it's not, it's not entitled to those protections until after the mod has been approved.
That's right.
So I'm, I'm just confused. I'm really confused about how we just voted.
Good point.
Nina?
Well, I think that, you know, we're going to do a lot of zoning changes and as we said, we didn't want to do the zoning changes till we knew what the housing element. And I think at least in my mind, the idea of a major mod is something that we do feel really needs more discretion and wouldn't fall in that category, but it's maybe not the things that are on the list right now.
So, I don't, I don't, we, we took a vote, we talked, no, Leslie, we're done with this. Like, let's move on.
Okay.
Move on. The next thing was whether or not, and if anybody wants to change their vote, say now. I think that was important. So, let's move on to density bonus.
Well, I'm going to make a different motion then. I'm going to, unless it's already hap, may I make a different motion? Because this goes to Commissioner Fresco's point just now. I would, and I don't know, I don't, I don't know whether this is already underway, but if this is the will of the commission that major mods do not require, do not accord with HAA, then I would like to see some direction that it is our intention to reduce the number of things that count as major mods. I'd like to make that clear simultaneously with our vote.
Yeah.
So...
I would agree, I would agree with that.
I'm going to make a motion in this straw poll. Rachel, looks like she wants to speak to this.
Yeah, I just wanted also to, to make a point that the draft, the way the program is drafted and the language is written is to stay include at a minimum, so, you know, it doesn't, whatever you decide tonight, you know, we can certainly, you know, add additional projects in later, but it wasn't to preclude any certain types of projects, like projects requiring a major mod.
Right, I mean, because it, it feels like we're adding a constraint. So can I move that, that our framing of this is with the intent to reduce the number of major mods that trigger this limitation? I don't know how to frame that, but...
Commissioner Fondabarnardi?
I, I didn't have a question on that.
No, I, I'm sorry, let's take a straw poll. Commissioner Fondabarnardi?
Yes.
Excuse me, Chair. Can we take the roll call vote, please? This is Wendy.
That's where she's at.
I'm happy for you to take a roll call vote. No one, no one showed up on, I just started doing.
I didn't want to interrupt what you were doing. Do we have a second for Commissioner Landriss's motion?
Second.
Thank you.
What was your motion, Sean?
That we express our intent to reduce the number of major mods.
All right.
Okay. Chair Landriss?
I'm not the chair.
I'm so sorry. That was, that was very old. I'm going to go with Commissioner Fondabarnardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
No.
Vice Chair Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor?
Yeah.
I still need to vote, I'm voting yes.
Yes, you are. I'm sorry, Sean. It's my first time, forgive me.
All good, all good.
Commissioner Landriss?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. Six to one.
Okay, so, Heidi, do we need to take a vote on the density bonus incentives and concessions or no?
I don't think you'd need to. I think as Ms. Quok pointed out, first of all, you certainly are going to have flexibility to add or subtract to the list of projects that are eligible for streamlining under the program as written and then also state law does prohibit the city from considering projects that receive incentives and concessions from, you know, being, requiring a code change or zoning ordinance change. So I think you're okay.
Okay, so let's move on. Does anybody else have items on Program 1A? Okay. Um, let me just check one more thing, which I just, I'm going to check.
For anybody who's following, apparently the, the PowerPoint is now up. If you want to pull up the PowerPoint for yourself, you can get it off the agenda now.
Okay. With regards to the timeline for Program 1A, I am going to propose that with regards to the emergency zoning ordinance, that, and the administrative process, that though, that that... that, and the administrative process, that though, that that piece of Program 1A be done by December 31st, and that to the extent that this deals with density bonus and FARs and heights, that that also be done by December 31st. But that's my most, that is a motion.
A second?
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, pardon me. Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor?
No.
Unanimous.
Hey. Moving on to Program 1B. Does anybody have comments?
I, I have a comment. Regardless, this is really a challenge to the traditional role of the Architecture Review Board. And so what really is going to happen on that dais is there's going to be discussion that goes something like this. Would you not object to blank? Would not object to blank? Would you not object to blank? They would have very little design impact because they would only get things done that everyone was in total agreement on both sides of the table. Is that the kind of ARB we want?
No. I don't know, I don't know how you would even track the standards.
Yeah, the whole point of ARB is, is discretionary standards. That's what it's for.
I just, I'm asking.
Right, and the law says we can't do that.
Right.
Which is too bad, because we see a lot of nice projects come out of them, out of this city.
And, and to be honest, they make the planning commissions work really more fine-grained and nuanced. When we don't have the time to get down and drill down about this, that, and the other, we refer to them and says, can you study this further? And give us an opinion, because we've got 800 other things on our docket. And they're perfectly positioned to deal with a lot of those fine-grained issues. So, but essentially, are we saying that the state law has essentially neutered our ARB? And, and why are we even talking about it in this context? It's, in other words, it's just a giant float-up thing. It's float-up number 2.0 for, for a project. So I'm asking the conceptual question. If, if we want to streamline things, do we need to have two float-ups?
Heidi, do you want to?
I just want to make a, a small clarification to what state law says. So under SB 330, the city is not, the city is prohibited from adopting new subject, like new design standards that aren't objective. We have already, we already have these design standards in place. They've been in place since the 70s. The other, the other state law requirement is projects that qualify for SB 35 streamlining. You absolutely cannot use not objectives. You have to use objective design standards. Though law does not necessarily preclude us from using object, design standards that are subjective or not objective at this moment. But we did receive comment from HCD that encouraged the city to look at ways of increasing certainty and, and for housing projects with respect to the design review process. I don't want the planning manager to jump in if she wants to. But I just wanted to make that small clarification with respect to the law.
Yeah, that's correct.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi? Hi, Jing.
Hi. Yeah, I was just affirming that, you know, in our clarifications with HCD, they, they made very clear that the city's design review findings are concerning. They are, as you're well aware, not at all objective. And they did point that out in their letter, confirmed it in clarification calls with us. You know, and I think that under SB 35, you know, the city will probably be subject to that come the next reporting period. So it's something we had anticipated. I heard someone asking what an objective design standard is. You know, there's only been a handful of cities that have sort of started going down that road. So if you're not, you know, very clear about what they are, don't feel alone in that. It's something that we'll definitely be exploring. It's, it's not totally foreign to the city. We have had things like that in the code before. They're not awesome, you know, that you sort of angular standards, they're, they're very precise, you know, in the code. But it is, you know, what we may have to do under, under what's required by state law.
Hey, Heidi. Aren't we, are projects that go to design review already subject to the limit on the number here?
Yes.
Okay, so, so in here, if we put that in the code, it would be, so it then survives the, like, the 330.
Yes, that's correct.
So does anybody have a motion they want to make with regards to amending this program? Commissioner?
I have a question. I, I'm still, I'm at a little bit of a loss, and maybe it's that the laws are not written as clearly as they could be. But you have a city like Santa Barbara, right? That imposes design standards on everything that gets built in the city of Santa Barbara. That's legal? I'm, I'm trying to understand where we have, where we have flexibility to, we don't have that kind of design, we're, we're not doing that. But I'm, I'm just trying to understand where, where the law is right now. Heidi, can you, can you help?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm maybe I need to make sure that I understand your question. So again, SB 330 prohibits the city from adopting new design standards after the, like, after 2020, after January 1, 2020, that aren't objective. We actually have these design standards in place and have been applying them for years. But we can't adopt new ones
New ones.
that aren't objective. And then the, the other, the other prohibition is again, is again using, we, we will not be able to apply the current ARB findings to a project that qualifies for SB 35 streamlining, because they're not objective.
And I understand, that I absolutely
So, and then on top of that, HCD expressed some concern about ensuring that our design standards do not lose a housing project from getting built. It doesn't increase the length of time that it takes. It doesn't decrease certainty for housing providers. So that's, that's what this program is in part responsive to.
So, okay, so this is what I'm, this is what I'm struggling with. One of the things that I think happened, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm appreciative of the housing that's been produced over the last 15 years. But one of the things that I think happened is that we created, we had such specific design standards that, that we produced essentially, somebody came up with a, an architectural model that was code compliant. And then they trotted out the Xerox, right? So across portions of our city, you have these cookie cutter you know, apartment projects that look very, very similar. And more than anything else, provoke responsive people saying, this isn't so great. Because it, it, it doesn't, because it's so repetitive over and over again. So what I, this is what I'm trying to understand. In the LOSE and in the DCP, we responded to that criticism. And we created design standards that were more flexible and encouraged more creativity. I'd love to hear Mario on this, because he's an actual architect. To what extent can we use the ARB to encourage that kind of creativity? So that's a two-part question. To what extent can the ARB still encourage creativity so that we avoid cookie cutter projects? Which we know, people want the housing, they just don't want it to look identical all the time. And B, what happens, this is a separate question, when new, how do we apply old design standards to new materials? That could affect our ability, you know, that, that, that kind of push up against design standards simply because of the nature of the material?
So, hold on.
Yeah, those are my two questions.
All right, so I'm going to try to answer them, and if I'm wrong, then Heidi can jump in. But what they're, what they're saying is, what I've heard them saying is, any design standard that exists before 2020, we can apply. So what was happening in the LOSE, we can apply.
Great.
Okay, what we cannot do is start in 2021 and amend the design standards for some new building material. Then we will run into some problem. I think
Can we apply existing design standards to the new, we can still apply the design standards to the new material?
Yes. That's how I understand it. So the question I think that's in front of us is, is there anybody who wants to change 1B right now? Is there any changes to this? And if not, let's move.
So my only thing that I might mention, and I, and I'll bring, I'd like to bring Ross back on this, is that when we did, when we did the R1 standards a year and a half, two years ago, one of the things that we said was that we wanted to re-engage AR, we wanted to kind of change ARB's role in R1 standards, particularly on sloped parcels.
Yeah, that is correct. We were going to relook at our development standards for sloped parcels. Whether that was more RB, ARB, or less ARB, I don't think that was decided upon. But definitely different development standards for sloped parcels.
Okay, is there anything, is there anything in the current language that would preclude our doing that? Because I think there was broad consensus that we wanted to actually have ARB play that role. SB 330 doesn't apply to single-family, right?
If it's an objective standard, we can, we can create objective standards. We can't create subjective standards.
Right, I, I'm trying to avoid getting into the weeds. I'm just trying to make sure that our language doesn't cut ourselves, that we don't accidentally preclude ourselves from having the conversation about ARB and sloped parcels that we said we wanted to have. That's all I'm trying to make.
It's a bigger question, I think, for Heidi, is can we at this point change our development standards? And I'm going to say yes, because we're about to do that with our FARs and our height. But you're asking specific to R1.
Yeah.
Right, so we're not precluded from altering our development standards. That is correct. And, and an objective is like, so, so high, however much your setback is, however much your, your, so it's subjective. Can you do a thumbs up or a thumbs down?
Well, I think what we were doing in the residential, with, with residential, we were dealing with, I think what we were hearing was that there were projects that were looking like they were kind of looming over the street. There was a lot less concern, or looming over the lower neighbor, right? And I don't know if looming is an objective standard.
No, no, Sean, I, I think we could go and modify the standard so that they don't loom. We can't go to our ARB meeting and say, this one, this one looms too much, but the one next door, the one we did last week, doesn't. You can't have that discretion.
Right, I get that. I'm just, so my question, very
Use the word, I would say you cannot use the word loom. There's new cases that come down, you can't use the word loom. You can say, it would not create a shadow that, a shadow on the next-door property from the hours of 4:00 to 7:00 on the Equinox and the Solskys.
Okay. It is the Solskys, it is the Solskys right now, right? Yeah, Equinox, no.
No, it's not the Solskys, it's like a, okay.
It's something.
We've answered the question, you can create new standards, Sean.
Okay, and there's nothing in this language that would stop us from doing that, so great. Then I don't want to amend it, but I don't know about anybody else.
Anybody else have proposed amendments to Program 1B that they would like to make a motion on?
You just said no.
Sorry.
You just said no.
Come on, I'm not looking at the language, I'm looking at the timeline. I would like to make sure, because timelines slip. I would, if, if, when did, Jing, when did you say SB 35 was going to start dinging us? 2023?
Yeah, the next, the next annual reporting period, so yeah, in time for 2023.
Okay, so I would like to make, this is what I would like to do, is I would, August 1st is great. I don't know if these deadlines are allowed to slip. I would like to make sure that whatever we do, we give, we do this well in advance of 2023, so that our housing providers know what's happening, like, not the night before.
Then have a different date, just a different date.
Okay.
Different date, or don't.
Okay.
I want an objective date.
I want to be clear, I, I, I mean, this is, this is hard work to create objective standards. This is not just something you make up overnight. So I would be very, very uncomfortable having it any earlier than August. It quite frankly, may, we may need the whole year to do it. And, you know, this is not, none of us are happy about this, right? Like, we went through a whole DCP process that eliminated all the objective standards that were in downtown, because they created these wedding cake buildings. And so we have, you know, some standards in the DCP now. But, you know, if this is what the law requires us to do, you know, we will, the program just, just is, it, it certainly allows us to create new standards, you know, but we have to define, to your example, looming, right? You have to define what does that mean to loom numerically and objectively, right? It can't just be
So then I would say, I would say no. Better than September 30th, okay? That's my point. Like, I'm willing to go to September 30th on this, but I don't want to go to December 31st for January 1 implementation. That's sort of what
I second September 30th.
Let's hope.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert? Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Regrettably, no.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor?
Yes. Okay, let's move on to 1C. Does anybody have any proposed changes to 1C? Commissioner Lambert, and then Vice Chair Reese.
I would like to add some language. When it's the parenthetical where it says R2, R3, R4, I would like to add OP2, OP3, and OP4. I don't see any reason to exclude those residential zones from coverage. The other thing, you want to do it one at a time? Because I have another
Yeah, let's just do it one at a time. I'll second that. We have a roll call vote, please?
Wait, discussion? I think we have a discussion point.
Oh, all right.
Why not just change the IE to an EG then, so that we can include really any relevant zone?
Oh, EG, EG instead of IE?
Yeah.
That's cool.
Well, can I, can I just ask why we need this EG to begin with? I mean, in other words, isn't multi-unit residential zone sufficient? And by the way, why are we limited to residential zones? Don't we want to incentivize housing production on surface parking lots, full stop?
I don't know the answer to that. That's my friend.
This suggests, this is really an attempt to address the A-Lot problem. It's a very targeted kind of initiative.
There was a speaker last week who talked about an acre site that was attached to a residential project, and it was an acre of surface parking. Though I understand there's concerns on that, that we stayed away from that because we don't want displacement. We do have a lot of relocation requirements and protections. But I would be, I would like to add a second motion, which would say, add it to, if it's attached to residential projects, as long as we're not displacing existing residents. So if we can build net new housing without demoing existing buildings, I would like to add in more than just parking lots attached to commercial uses.
I second that.
Can I offer a friendly amendment? Which is, named it, which is, the city shall adopt standards that incentivize net housing production. Net new housing production.
Yeah, but the problem that I have a little bit with that, Sean, is, and generally, I'm supportive of net new. But that means we could demo some of the existing residential units. Those residents would lose their place, and then we would build new. I think what we're trying to do in this is protect existing, well, I think it might be kind of unrealistic to think that you're going to protect 100% of those units. So maybe there's some play in there, but I think this is a really sensitive issue. So I'm proposing right now that you can't demo existing units, but you could build on the new surface, or on the surface parking.
Yeah, that's, that's a fair point.
Isn't this just parking that's adjacent to commercial uses?
No, no, I'm, I'm saying, Leslie, that we should not just have it attached to commercial uses. And we heard a perfect example of this at our last meeting, which there's an acre site that is surface parking, that is all surface parking across from Edison. And is that really the best use of our property? Is to have surface parking, or should we build housing?
Right.
Okay, we just delete, can we just delete the, the phrase? Okay, can we just delete the, the phrase that are associated with existing commercial uses, and then instead of IE, do EG? And that being, and then add the language that Jim has proposed. Do you guys agree we could do one motion with a friendly amendment to the motion makers?
Can I add one more friendly amendment? Because technically, the A lots on Montana and Ocean Park, I think are, those may be R1, and I'm pretty sure that the lots, because we went over this in May, June, the lots on the north side of Montana are actually like behind the Whole Foods. Um, those are actually R1 lots. So I don't, I don't want to have the word multi-unit. So could we just say?
All right, go ahead.
I'll read the sentence. The city shall adopt standards that incentivize housing production on surface parking lots in residential zones. And then something with Jim's language to avoid displacement, and then including but not limited to.
So then are you saying we would also delete the phrase in multi-unit residential zones?
No, we would just say, we would delete the phrase in multi-unit. So it would be surface parking lots in residential zones.
Right, 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 right.
The, the point of this language is the A lots, as Mario said. So we want to have that specificity that we're addressing the A lots. I'm saying that the A lots are attached to R1, R2, R3, R4, and potentially OP1, OP2, OP3, OP4, right? And then.
That's fine, that's fine, that's good. I have another amendment. Should I wait for that?
Let's vote on that, then you can add more.
Yeah, let's vote on that. Did this slide come from? Um, who's doing the roll call vote?
Uh, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor.
Yes. Okay, Leslie, what's your next?
The next one, he's just inserting some language where it says existing commercial uses, including but not limited to removing density caps, da-da-da, uh, and revising street access for projects, street access requirements for projects.
Um, can I second that and ask for a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Um, I would also like to add lot consolidation and replacement parking.
Okay, okay, cool.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Um, so in the 1C where it talks about, uh, facing, oh, sorry, wrong one. Um, shall adopt standards, blah, 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 including but not limited to removing the density cap, and then we're proposing adding, uh, but not limited to, removing the density cap, replacement parking, access and lot consolidation.
Yeah.
Say that again, you broke.
Extreme access to the project.
Oh, access, okay. Right, okay, sorry, I'm having a little internet issue here.
Can I offer?
And I apologize, I see commercial parking replacement is already here, so that doesn't mean, so it would be access to projects and lot consolidation.
Can I add a friendly amendment? And I don't know if it's necessary, oh, stop me if it's not. Um, we've, I've seen some designs for kind of townhouses that face the alley, if you do some, do some nice things with the alleys. Um, is there, is that a, could we build? Could you have now townhouses facing an alley, or do we need to add orientation to that list?
No, there's no prohibition on something like that.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, let's have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Chair Pastor.
Yes. Hey, we're like cooking with gas now. Okay, Program 1D, does anybody have any comments, questions?
For the record, we want everybody to move to electrical. We want people to move to electrical.
What?
Go, 1D. You're not wrong. Okay, going once, going twice on 1D. Hey, look straight at this, 1E. As in E Lisa. Um, I have a question on this one, uh, staff. And maybe it just got located to somewhere else, but why did you delete the word and development standard?
So, um, this program was intended to focus on just the design standards. So the development standards for Bergama are now enwrapped in Program 1J, um, in terms of the citywide upzoning, so it was very confusing to mix those all together. And, and it was a HCD comment as well about kind of what was happening, so we wanted to make it really clear where upzoning was occurring, and then where like design standards, we just wanted to divorce those two concepts.
Okay. Um, anyone have any other questions or changes or comments? Going once, going twice. Hey, we're cooking with electric. 1F as in Frank.
Fresco.
I think there's gonna be a lot of discussion on this. Let's start with Commissioner Raskin. And then let's go to Commissioner Fresco, and then let's go to Commissioner.
No, F as in Fresco, that's all, go ahead.
Oh, F as in Fresco. Let's start with Mr. Raskin.
All right, so the question for staff first, um, do we have to include the development standards here, or can we defer this, refer the discussion when we're doing the redlining later?
Well, um, I think to the extent that we were trying to provide specificity, and these are the resulting FARs from a lot of analysis that's been done, we didn't see any reason to not include it for clarity. Um, and the implementation later. But I, I don't think there's anything that, that we don't need to include it, but we, we did hear, you know, from HCD that they, they wanted specifics um, in the program as much as possible.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I, I do think that, you know, the process of the text amendments and the zoning code, redlining, should involve a little bit more fine tuning and public participation, and it would be my preference, I suspect this is not gonna get a majority of votes from the rest of people, but my preference would be to take it out in 1F and 1J.
Yeah, and I, and I think to clarify, these FARs are the basis of our suitable sites inventory as well, in terms of the calculation. Um, so it, it is foundational to the housing element on minutes compliance.
Uh, Commissioner Lambert, then Commissioner Landris.
Okay, I'm gonna say this, it applies to the other chart with the inclusionary percentages too. I have, have for some time had a problem with this 5, 5, and 5. Um, I think it's kind of arbitrary, it does not reflect the proportions in the RENA. Uh, almost half the units in the RENA affordable component are supposed to be very low income. With this formula, we only get a third. So I, I, I guess the bottom line for me is I think this should be done in the zoning code, not in the housing elements. I don't want to lock this in, and it would be locked in if it were in the housing element. Um, the other, the other issue is that this, this breakdown really does not work for off-site housing. Because offsites being developed is 100% affordable housing by nonprofits, and as you all know, moderate income has no source of public subsidy, in order to qualify for tax credits. So this, putting this 5, 5, and 5 on an offsite project, or whatever it's supposed to be, doesn't work for nonprofit, because moderate income housing does not work for nonprofit, because it doesn't have a resource of funding. So I, I, I guess my motion would be to not include these percentages here or the other chart, but instead do them in the zoning code, which is more easily changed.
Second.
I'll second, oh.
Okay. Uh, um, can we take a straw poll? Uh, Jim, do you wanna?
Can I just ask one question?
I would think I was next.
Oh, you're next.
It's a clarifying question on this one.
It is actually, because, it is, because I wanted to, that was my, I was going where, where Leslie went, but I, before I, you know, endorsed this or vote for it, we had letters from attorneys asking for those, um, those mixes to be removed in general, and I wanted to ask staff what, what staff's position was on the, on specifying the mix, and what it would do to us to take it out before we, before we voted to do it.
I mean, I don't think we need them in there. Um, you know, I, uh, I would clarify, the 5, 5, 5 was a very specific council direction, which is why um, they, it is in here, uh, but obviously the planning commission is welcome to make whatever recommendation you wish about it, but no, absolutely, I don't think it needs to be in, in the program for this to work.
Nina, do you have a clarifying question?
I do, which is basically, uh, did we stop talking about 1J? And move on to?
No, we're on 1F.
No, we're still on 1, we're still on 1F. As in Fresco. But it's, it's that, the 5%, the distribution is in both, I think, and so that's why we're talking, we're just talking about the removal of the 5, 5, 5 in both 1F and 1C.
Oh, okay, I, because there's a different chart that has it in a different place.
Right.
And so I didn't see it here, and I couldn't figure out what she was referring to. Okay, never mind.
Commissioner Raskin, and then Vice Chair Reese, and then let's go.
Sorry, just to be clear, we're not just talking about the 5, 5, 5 for Tier 1 projects, we're talking about all ratios of affordable housing, right?
Yep.
Correct.
Yes, please.
Uh, Commissioner Reese?
I just want to come back, I want to vote on this, and I want to come back and have a little more discussion on what Commissioner Raskin brought up about the FARs and height, if we want.
Yeah, me too. Okay, so as I understand it, the current motion is to remove, from anywhere in the document, let's just make it broad, a specific percentage of affordability for peers or otherwise, and a specific distribution of such units like 5, 5, 5. We have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Uh, I'll have to vote no, because I feel very comfortable removing the distribution. I don't feel comfortable removing the percentage, the overall percentage. Um, so I think we should just remove the distribution, but keep the percentage.
That's all right.
So let's, okay, so let's split, sorry, let's split the motion. So let's vote just on the 5, 5, 5. Not on the overall.
Just to be clear, it's not 5, 5, 5, because it's 5, 5, 5 in Tier 1, 5, 5, 10 in Tier 2, and 5, 10, 10 in Tier 3, so we're moving.
Removing the distribution.
We're repeating, we're removing the distribution, yeah.
Right, right.
Um, so this is on the distribution. Uh, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes, and I'm doing this because I think it helps people apply the density bonus easier to their projects. I think that's a big part of it.
And, and Chair Pastor.
Yes. Okay, so let's move on, and I want to clarify. So, actually, somebody make a motion. Who, who, somebody make a motion.
I, I'm gonna, okay, I'm gonna move, here's, I'm gonna move that we remove the specific percentages uh, associated with on and off-site affordability levels, but that we affirm that offsite shall require more than onsite.
Didn't we just do that?
No.
We did half.
We only did the distribution of income.
Okay.
Um, I would like to make a friendly amendment to that motion, which is that any percentages imposed will have demonstrated feasibility by our economic consultant.
Absolutely.
That is wonderful, more than general.
Okay, so can we do a roll call vote?
Uh, sorry, just clarification on that last point, on the percentages imposed, was that language you wanted added to the program? Um.
Yes, please.
To the program, okay. And to clarify, these are based on analysis that's already been done.
Correct.
Now, we're just.
Okay.
What we're, what we're doing is we're taking the numbers out, and we're, we're saying it has to be feasible, and we want offsite to have a higher number than onsite, but we just don't want to specify the number in this document.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor.
Yes. Okay, Vice Chair, um, Reese, did you have another?
I wanted to come back to the FAR and the height, because I, I, I found it a little odd to have it in there as well, so specific. Now, I know when we did the loose, we put in max heights, and then they got ratcheted down. So I was under the assumption these were the max heights, and then get me a little scared there, Chair, here.
Sorry, I was applying, sorry, I was trying to get.
I know. No, so I, and I'm sorry that I don't know this off time ahead, but staff, are you telling me that the numbers here are the base numbers that you need to get to your FARs and you get your densities, or?
These, these FARs and heights represent a feasible housing project that is necessary to support the affordable housing, the inclusionary requirement that was studied. So in this case, the 15% with the distribution, these are the FARs that are keyed to those amount of affordable housing that should be in the project.
These are kind of minimums, almost.
They should be.
They are not just barely margin, they're not marginal, they are very feasible, to be clear.
Okay, well, let's, I'd like to hear a little discussion from the commission, whether we think we need to hold on to these in this document or not.
Don was next.
Am I next?
Yeah.
All right, so, uh, here, here's, here's my, here's my concern. Um, I don't, um, I, we, we can't downzone, we're not allowed to downzone, so, okay, fine. Um, we had a letter from the Conservancy expressing some concern, and we've heard, you know, we've heard from members of the public, certainly I have, expressing concern about the height and FAR on, on, on Main Street. Um, we've also had a letter proposing, um, potentially a T far, a transfer of FAR program for parcels with historic resources on. So I would, I am happy to have this conversation, but I would like to have this conversation with all the heights and FARs in the mix, because if we want to lower the heights and FARs on Main Street in response to the Conservancy, I want to know where we have to raise it in order to make up for the housing that we're gonna take away.
Can I respond to that?
Sure, Lambert.
Um, I've actually been communicating with Ruth Ann and Carol today, and I think we've come up with, I know what their concern is. Their concern is they don't want properties facing Main Street to have this 65 foot, we're not even there yet, the 65 foot height, that's fine. They don't care about the parking lot. So we're actually talking about production on Main Street being the parking lots, not the stores facing Main Street. So as long as we somehow find a way to exclude the actual Main Street addresses from the 65 foot height, they're fine. They're fine with that.
Okay, so that's not part of the, so can we hold on?
No, it's not, it's not part of this.
We're right now.
Right, so let me rephrase my, my, my concern is that, my concern is that I don't want to talk about the downtown in a vacuum, because if we, if we move something somewhere, we've got to make up for it somewhere else. That's my.
Yeah, I understand your point. Okay, Commissioner Raskin was next.
Uh, it's okay, I'll, I'll defer my time to others.
Commissioner Fresco?
Um, I agree that while these may follow feasibility numbers, we still have a livable city to think about. And basically, when I look across all these charts, the entire city has become uniform, and we have no objective design standards. And, uh, we just really need to think about this a different way so that we retain. It's, it's just, you know, it's gonna look like one of those fascist Mussolini-type cities where everything is the same. And we have a lot of historic character and community character, and expectations of people to find different things in different parts of the city. And that's what cities are. So this kind of uniformity, I think, would be really harmful to our city overall, and of course, the Main Street example is incredibly. And of course, the Main Street example is incredibly damaging. I mean, first of all, those lots are low, and it has the highest height of 65 feet. We just have to talk about this in a much finer grade that we just can't do right now with this deadline in this document. So maybe, actually, I'd like to suggest a, a range or a minimum or something like that. You know, we designed the city in our loose with MUBL and MUB and NC, and they, there was a graduation. I think proportionally, we need to think about it that way.
Ding, do you want to weigh in here, Lefty, hold on.
Okay. I do, I do, because I think we have to have some grounding in this discussion. And I certainly appreciate, you know, as a city planner myself, and certainly we've done a lot of this sort of thinking around the loose in terms of nuance in areas. But in terms of the statutory requirements of the housing element, the reason we're here in terms of looking at housing on Main Street, just to remind everybody, it's from an AFFH perspective, allowing housing spread and marry in many areas of the city. We cannot adopt standards that make housing projects infeasible in those areas. And so analysis has been done, kind of working backwards, because the city has inclusionary requirements, that if you're going to allow housing projects in those districts with the inclusionary requirements, there is, you know, a minimum, more than minimum level of FAR necessary to make sure that the housing projects can actually happen there. You know, so from, from that perspective, that's where these FARs are coming from. I think we certainly hear the concerns and what have you. And, you know, obviously with designated resources and the like, there are additional reviews associated with that. But I do want to be clear that, you know, if we intend, as we did, I mean, this was a deliberate path to go down to introduce housing in areas of the city that have never seen it, and it's always been infeasible to do it. And from a, you know, access, opening up access to high opportunity areas of the city, it's a really important concept in the housing element. And that's, that's why the FARs and the heights are where they are, because that's what it takes to have feasible housing projects in those areas.
That is important.
Important, but at the same time, not in every place is feasible.
Yeah, I think, really colliding with the, the kind of unbelievably high numbers here that we have to reach. And the reason I say that is if you go on top of any parking structure downtown, the city is very articulated. There's tall buildings and low buildings and big towers and tiny thin things. You know, it's very dramatic and very beautiful in its own way, because it's very different. When you see a whole list of everything's at 55 feet, surprise, surprise, all that, that difference and drama, that articulation is going to mush out literally at 55 feet. Everyone's going to build to that max, everyone's going to build on that 55 feet. And you're going to lose the excitement, you know? Maybe the most exciting building will become the clock tower or the Wilshire One building, because it's the only thing that sticks out above the 55-foot podium that we're building. So I really like the idea of Nina's to have a range, so we can get some articulation, encourage articulation, and we can refine it a little bit later, when we have a little more time to really think about it. Because these are benchmark feasibility things, but they don't lead to good cities. They're just like, you, you just kind of cross the line, this is the C+. And we're trying to get at least an A-, and how do we get there is the question.
So do we have, does someone have a suggestion for a motion? We've lost Commissioner Lambert, so I'm a little hesitant to vote until she comes back. So I, I might say that let's put a pin on this for just one minute, and I'm going to, and maybe if people think of motions, I'm going to propose something that I hope is not controversial for 1F. Although, no, it's not really for 1F, I can't do that. Does anybody have a motion of something they want to see different or changed?
Is it, I have another question, which is, is it staff's understanding from the comments we got from the state that we have to have these numbers in there, or some numbers? Or can the numbers say, you know, can we have a more descriptive section about how we're going to address housing in each zone?
You know, I think we've looked at some examples of certified or soon to be certified elements, and some of them actually do include the numbers in there. And again, from our perspective, these numbers are the basis of the suitable sites inventory. So it helps to sort of tie that thread together of, you know, where, where did the numbers come from? And how did you demonstrate that there's own capacity throughout the city? Especially because the sites are distributed much broader, you know, than just the loose strategy, because of the introduction of housing in areas where it was formerly never, never occurred before.
So. I'm sorry, I just had another question based on what you said. So basically, the, you know, we talked about the city-owned sites and neighborhood. The Main Street parking lots are R3 and R4 and are perfectly suitable for already zoned, really, for heights as high when you include a housing bonus. But Main Street, what if it, in particular, what if we considered, because there are so many designated landmarks there already, and there's also so many proposed or possible potential landmarks on that street, what if it was reevaluated as a transfer of development rights trip, and there was some other place, or even other places within Main Street, maybe, where we could do that, and that that is the way to have a lower limit on Main Street and return, preserve its character? It's such a special thing, and I feel like there has to be other ways to work around with rules we have, or rules we can create to make the suitable sites inventory viable and still achieve our other goals in the city. Do you see a path for that?
I mean, I will just say that TDR was something that we looked at pretty in depth when we did the loose, and to some degree in the DCP. It's not a, it's not a simple thing to do by any means. And I'm not sure, you know, it's just not something we've, we've looked at in this context, because of our past explorations of it are, you know, that it's, it's a very expensive program to administer, and we're not completely sure of the benefits. You know, I think realistically, when you look at Maine and Montana, the average parcel sizes, and I, I think, you know, there's not huge amounts of like common property ownership, you know? So the reality, the true reality of housing possibly happening there, you know, you, you need to be able to have sites that are big enough to accommodate, you know, that, that level of housing. And that's, you know, where you see housing that has occurred on Main Street, you know, you can see they're like city block large sites, but there's not that many of them. And on Main Street, you know, you can see there's only a handful that have been identified. So, you know, although the opportunity is there, the, you know, the, the sites themselves are not, there's not particularly large sites in either of those areas.
So maybe it's not suitable for housing. I mean, not everything can be everywhere. I, you know, I just, I, I can't accept it.
Okay, so do we have a motion on 1F? Does anybody want to make a motion as related to 1F, this in Fresco?
Can I try?
And this is the downtown, not the everything else.
Right, can, can, can I, can I try a motion? Would it, I guess, before I make the motion, let me ask staff the question. I think I hear you saying you want these numbers in this housing element so that the state sees that we're serious about this work. So could we make references to, because there's a lot of repetition here, could we make references to these minimum FARs, 2.75 and 55, and say something like, just replace the table, or replace that portion of a table with a sentence that says, you know, it is anticipated that the FAR in height for districts within the downtown shall be, you know, at least 2.75 and 55 to 65 feet, going up to 4.0 and 80 or in the, in the TA. Like some kind of sentence that just puts the numbers in once and doesn't repeat them over and over again, so we can actually do that work in the zone accord.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can, we can certainly try with that, and worst cases, they ask us to put a table in, so we can certainly try.
I'll make that my motion, replace the table with, with a sentence that expresses the anticipated minimums.
Yeah.
Do you have to talk about downtown now?
We're only talking about downtown.
Okay.
So.
And that leaves us the flexibility if we, if we have to come back, because we're going to do something on Main Street that we're, we're going to come back and go a little higher in some portion of downtown to make up for it, that we can do that now, you know, yeah.
Hey, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi, do you have a comment, or are you just?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment, because I think another option here that we're looking at, and I agree with the, the motion, is that when you, if you think of these areas that we're talking about, you know, these different zones downtown, they're not all the same size, some of them are actually quite small, some of them are bigger. So a small increase in one, or a small decrease in one could be compensated by a more larger increase in a slightly smaller one. We could play the area game of the relative footprints of these areas, and really try to still modulate our city, always ending up in that same feasibility envelope, but without ending with that flat crew cut of our downtown. So that's what I would like to aim for, but it's going to take a little more refinement.
So do you, is there some way that you can articulate that for the motion?
Well, I think Sean has articulated it pretty well. The only better thing would be saying the, the things will be in a range between X and Y, and then let it go.
Right. I was acknowledging a minimum, though, because I think this, I think staff wants us to acknowledge that the 2.75 and the 55 really are a minimum. But, yeah.
Great.
You can't go above or below for our general.
Okay, so can we have a, Commissioner Lambert?
Never mind, never mind.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please? Ding.
Wendy.
I can do it, yes. Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yeah.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
That's Vice Chair Reese, sorry about that. And Chair Pastor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, G as in giraffe, 1G. Does anybody have any proposed changes to this language?
Can I ask what happened to the accelerator program? Didn't we get a grant?
This program basically got divided into two. So part of the, where you see the, the red line that gets crossed out, it got moved into Goal 4. So we just divorced this a little.
But the grant, we still have the money, we still won the grant, right?
You're still very much working on the accelerator program, and you'll see that language later in this table.
Okay, so then, shouldn't the first sentence be moved? Because you deleted ADU accelerator program, and then the first sentence of this program refers to an ADU accelerator program.
I think what's maybe more happening is, either, I think the title should have not eliminated it, because I'm just scrolling down to see the new language of the other one. So the new language got moved to 4C, which was kind of introducing ADUs to, you know, the additional ADU into the R1 zone. So that, the accelerator program is the first one, and it'll be a title change.
So we should bring back the, we should undelete that piece?
Yes, it looks like it, yes.
Does that need a motion?
Yeah. Yeah. Sorry, that was just a typo, sorry.
Great. My question, can I ask you a follow-up?
Yes.
Yeah, just when the state tells us what's wrong with our ADU laws, is December 20, is the December of next year soon enough? Or are they going to want us to fix it like the minute they tell us?
You know, I mean, the timelines we gave are just kind of, you know, by this time. I would imagine if we got a letter from the state, we would immediately start acting on that. But just given the, we're not sure when that letter's coming, kind of a thing, we will have this, that's why I think the timeline is given.
Then I got nothing.
Okay, 1H as in Henry. Okay, 1I. I'll check mine out.
Yes, I have something.
Go ahead.
I, I guess, I guess there was an earlier version of this, where I think design somehow, I, I think we had language that was like design and construction, and then, and then everything went away except construction. And I don't have, I don't have a problem with it, but I wasn't sure the reason for the change, and thought maybe there was a reason that we should know about. Anybody?
We can check back on the language. I, I don't see them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, don't believe there was a previous design element into it, but we can check back on earlier version.
This is, yeah, this is a red line on the adopted draft, so I'm not sure what language there would have been.
Construction techniques for housing. Okay, I, I, the only word I would look to add in this would be sustainable as in environmentally responsible.
You like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll move that we change the first sentence to say the city shall support innovative, lower-cost, efficient, and environmentally sustainable construction techniques for housing.
Second, should we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris? Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Chair Pastor?
Yeah. Thank you. Moving on to 1J, so this is the rezoning and development standards for the rest of the city. We have already voted on removing the 15% and the 555 distribution. Commissioner Lambert?
I just have one change, I would like to see the MUB height moved to 65 feet, because we're really talking about, I think, putting almost a lot of the housing on the boulevards.
Mr. Raskin?
Yeah, I, I feel pretty strongly that, that we should just take out the whole table. I, I think that this needs much more work through. I think that, you know, the upzoning in Main Street and Pico neighborhood in particular, can have some Main Street and Pico neighborhood in particular, can have some pretty wide ranging impacts that we need to fine tune in the red lines to our decks and zoning code amendments. And I don't think that this should be specified in stone at this time.
Commissioner Lambert?
I guess the quandary here, Ellis, is that staff needs FARs and heights in order to project the number of units on the SSI that are, that are feasible. So without any direction whatsoever in the housing element about how to do that, I think there could be a problem. I mean, I think, I think, I think we could add language in here about how these are subject to, you know, feasibility studies, design input, et cetera. But I think we have to have something in the housing element to guide the SSI calculation. And I think it would be.
Could we perhaps do something like we did for the last table and have minimums?
Yeah.
That's what I'm, that's what I was going to move.
Yeah. Tom, do you want to move that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's the same, it's the same idea here where we're, I'll move that we replace the table with a sentence that anticipates the likely minimum height, FAR in height needed to sustain the, the SSI. I have another motion, but, but I'll start with that one.
Well, Sean, how would you remove the table? What are you going to put in its place?
A sentence like we did with the DCP. It is anticipated that the FAR in height required to sustain the SSI in these districts will, will range from 2.7, 2.25 and, you know, 45 feet to 3.0 and 65 feet.
You know, we could.
I have another motion about Main Street, so I want to do them separately.
I was just going to make a suggestion that we, because there's so many zones here that we maybe say for the commercial zones, for the Bergamont zones, you know, or and break them into two parts so that we have two ranges. So that it's a little easier to show that we have enough FAR in height planned to meet our SSI needs.
I'm comfortable with that based on the tables, based on the breakdown of the tables that are there. But I want, we are, remind everyone that we've decided to allow housing everywhere that it's not banned, meaning outside the industrial conservation zone and even in the industrial conservation zone, we're allowing housing, you know, outside the 500 foot limit. So I'm not sure the value of that.
Okay, never mind. I was just trying to zero in on making, anyway, it doesn't matter. Fine. So what was your other part of your motion?
Well, let's do this first.
Let's do this first. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Thanks.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Can I just suggest a slight modification, trying to get to the same place? The posing, we left the chart in exactly as it is, but put a statement at the bottom that says these FARs and heights are minimums, but we have the right, the city reserve the right to adjust some upwards or downwards, as long as the overall effect is the same. And then that would give us the flexibility to modulate certain blocks, certain parts of boulevards and things, as long as the, when you average it all out, it came out to exactly the same place.
Yeah, I like that.
I like that too.
Are the makers of the motion open to that modification?
I'm open to it. I'm a little, I just want to get a, I mean, it's weird, but, you know, we, we just went vague with the DCP. Are we okay being vague over there and specific over here? Or does that look weird?
Well, we can go back to the DCP.
Yeah, we can reverse that to the DC. I guess what I'm trying to do is get the HCD out of plan, the planning department's hair. You know, get Caesar what is Caesar's and keep for us what is important to us, which is the fine tuning.
Which is why I wanted to take the language out entirely, because I don't want us to get sued by somebody who says we just downzoned.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to do that. I want to make it vague so that we can do the fine tuning in the zoning ordinance. I don't want us to get sued for make, making adjustments in the zoning ordinance that, that are inconsistent with the housing element because the law is so weird.
Can I say something? We're not downzoning because the high ends here of these heights are not even in the zoning codes. We'd only be downzoning if we look at what's there now and reduce the height, which we're not talking about doing. So it's not a downzoning issue whatsoever.
Yeah, if we went to existing zoning, there would be a downzoning.
But with, right, with the, the law, the way that it's written in terms of the housing element that precedes the zoning ordinance until the zoning ordinance is updated to reflect the housing element, I would just.
Let's let the city come in.
So, so I just want to give you a little bit of perspective because you're all correct. There's a bit of an art to what we're trying to do at this moment, right? Because we have to do enough specificity that HC gets, HCD gets satisfied. But you are correct, if the council subsequently takes an action that is not consistent with the housing element itself, then we're subject to a lot of legal liability. The third, the third thing is, is that there's actually two pieces going on with these heights and FARs. The one is the feasibility that's based on the council direction and the, and the feasibility studies that you've seen. And then the other piece is demonstrating enough capacity for the SSI.
Right.
So, so that's kind of in a nutshell, how we're trying to frame all of this and put it all together. So I'm sure it's not really necessarily that helpful to resolving this issue, but I did just kind of want to remind you of all of the pieces that we're trying to fit together.
Well, Heidi, do you think, just hold on, Sean. Heidi, do you think that the statement that, I think it was Commissioner Fonda Bernardi proposed, which is about the modulation, but being able to have that it cannot essentially reduce the capacity overall to what we are planning for in the housing element, do you think that that meets the requirements of HCD?
I think that would go a long way with respect to the SSI piece. We do have to commit to the zoning. We don't have to commit to that. I do think we would need to also ensure that we commit to not adopting any standards that aren't feasible. You know, all of these are commercial zones and they're committing, they're competing with commercial projects, right? So part of our constraints analysis is, is that, and so part of the commitment with the constraints analysis is also ensuring that we can demonstrate to the state that it's actually likely to be housing built in these areas. So that's like the other side of it. So if we could qualify it to ensure that, you know, nothing is proposed, is not backed up by, you know, feasible standards, then, then I think that, that would be okay. And the planning manager can jump in too if she has additional.
Okay, Commissioner Landris?
Okay, so I'd like to, responding to that, gonna, I'm going to amend my motion and we can go back and do this for the DCP. I'd like to move these tables to the, to an appendix. I'd like to keep it, I'd like to keep it vague as a single sentence in the, in the housing element program itself. I hope this gets at what Commissioner Raskin is concerned about. I'd like to then have an appendix that says these are the, these are the estimates based on our calculations, right? This is what as of October 15th, 2021, we think are the feasibility and capacity numbers. But it's the basis for our work, not the commitment that we're making, because I'm still concerned that when we try to then go and do the, the fine tuning, that we're going to get, if, if we're fine tuning something that's in the housing element program, that we're going to get somebody who's going to go after us for, for, for making a change.
Commissioner Lambert?
I, I don't see any distinction in doing it that way, Sean, because it's still part of the housing element. So I would support Mario's approach in keeping the chart in.
Mr. Raskin?
I, I think we should just do what we did for the DCP. Yeah, I, I think it bears emphasis too that, you know, for in the Pico neighborhood, I mean, if we were to build out these heights, I think it would be counterproductive to other portions of the housing element. I, I don't want to get down that rabbit hole. I, I support the, I support what we did for the DCP.
Can we just vote, Alisa? Can we just vote?
Well, I don't. Why didn't we move it on the table?
All right, so the motion on the table is to replace this table with a sentence that it's, that says it is until, it is, it is anticipated based on feasibility and capacity requirements that the FAR in height for this, for, for the city will range from 2.25 and 45 feet to 3.25 and 65 feet.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Fresco, let's take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
No.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
No.
And Chair Pastor?
I'm going to vote no.
That fails 4-3.
So do we have another motion?
Mario, why don't you do, do it?
Yeah, so we leave the chart in as it is and we put a sentence at the bottom that says that these are standards that achieve sustainability, you know, feasibility and that, but we reserve the right to adjust them appropriately without reducing feasibility at any zone. And that's it. You know, we're trying to make it simple for everybody.
Okay, Commissioner Raskin and then Commissioner Lambert and then Commissioner Landris?
For the sake of getting through this quickly, I'll, I'll second and can we make it part of the same motion that we'll do the exact same thing for the DCP?
Is that friendly to the maker?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Lambert, you're next.
All right, we just add a sentence, Mario, as hopefully a friendly amendment, that whatever we do will not result in a lower FAR height than is already in the, in the plan, because we don't want to get hung up on downzoning.
Sure, that works, that's fine.
Can I offer another, yeah, I just want another, offer another friendly amendment that we are reserving the right to adjust these up or down and that the overall feasibility and capacity shall remain the same, not in any individual zone. It's the overall feasibility and capacity that we're promising to preserve.
So overall works for capacity. It does not necessarily work for feasibility. It would have to be like per a particular zone, right, in order to confirm that it could actually be built with those development standards.
So it would be feasibility and then overall capacity.
Fine.
Ensuring feasibility and overall capacity.
Right.
And clarify for everyone, this is both for citywide and downtown. This includes a visionary motion.
Right.
And, and the words. All right, and the words up or down are in there, yes?
Yeah, he said that in his original motion.
As long as it doesn't go below existing zoning.
Correct. Oh, yeah, we can.
Right.
Okay, so to clarify that last motion you just made, you wanted to apply to program one F and one J. Right, you're like overturning what you did before on one F. Okay, all right. Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Chair Pastor?
Yes. I have another amendment to one J that I'd like to make. And actually, this is also for one F as in Frank. I, I want both of them to specify that that this applies to housing development projects as the term is defined in the housing accountability, or in 6589.5.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that item? Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I have a question. Sorry, did you mean this, that it only applies to housing development projects? Or just to say that it does apply to housing development projects? So did you mean to exclude commercial projects?
No, I did not mean to exclude commercial projects, sorry.
Cat just dumped.
All right, Jane, go ahead.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor?
Yeah. Okay.
I have an amendment that I wanted to add. I'm coming back. Yeah, I'd like to, and I'm, I'm not sure where we put it, but going back to what Leslie talked about with her conversation with the controversy, I would like to have a sentence about historic preservation and, and if we can't do TFR, fine, but can we, can we, can we protect those at some level? Can we split up the zoning? Can we make adjustments to the zoning to ensure historic conservation, some sentence like that?
Might you, can I suggest a sentence for that? Perhaps we could add a sentence that's some, that's something like, you know, staff will explore opportunities, or staff shall explore opportunities to protect designated historic resources as part of the sort of modulation of the heights and FARs.
Yeah, I think, I think that gets at it. And also remember that the, we were talking about this earlier with the educational housing and parcels that may not actually be zoned. So it may mean, it may be a sentence that's like, staff shall explore opportunities, including the creation, the reorganization or creation of new zoning districts to advance housing goals and preserve, you know, and ensure historic conservation.
Commissioner Lambert?
Well, I don't know, if, if this is too specific, it probably is, but the, the point that Carol and Ruth Ann and I came up with today was to exclude businesses facing Main Street between bay and pier from the 65 foot height limit. That's where the landmarks are. But that would not affect the parking lots behind them, but it would affect Main Street itself.
Yeah, but what if we, why don't we not tonight have a conversation about whether that's a better solution? Or whether it's better to rezone the parking lots into another zone that has very specific affordable housing overlay rules?
I'm just telling you what they, we came up with. So if there's another way to do it.
No, I'm agreeing, I'm agreeing with you, but the reason, like Lisa's sentence and my kind of amendation preserves the flexibility so we can come back and fix it later.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, I mean, this is a conversation that applies not just to Main Street, it applies to Pico, it applies to all sorts of places. This is something that, you know, we need to take our time to work through as part of the red lines, but I, you know, part of my goal in deleting this table in the first place was that we wouldn't have to be forced into these types of situations. I understand that we need the tables for HCD purposes, but I, I don't think we should start down the path of singling out specific neighborhoods.
But that's why I posed it as a question.
So Sean, you want to amend your motion?
Well, my motion is to say.
Is there an amendment question?
The motion is to add a sentence that says staff shall, staff may, staff may explore zoning reorganization or new zones to accomplish housing goals, creation of housing or conserving historic resources. And/or conserving historic resource.
What does that mean?
It means that we could rezone the parking lots, leave Main Street the way it is, but rezone the parking lots. It means that we could we, if the school district or the college has something that they want to build housing on, that we would zone that, you know, we'd look around the neighborhood, we'd zone it potentially, that we will use zoning as a tool to advance our housing goals and ensure appropriate historic conservation. We're kind of reserving the right to do that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I, can I suggest a friendly amendment? I would like it to clarify that it's only designated to historic resources.
No, that's not a good idea because we have so many on our HRI that we don't have the capacity or resources to designate. So we have to consider potential historic resources.
Okay, then I can't, I can't support it then.
That's much too broad.
So let's take a vote.
Work resources under SEQA includes what's on the inventory. So if you just say historic resources, it does the job.
It actually does not necessarily include every, every, in the downtown it does because the city took specific steps to have those, to have the HRI and, you know, meet the requirements under state law, but, but properties that are listed on the HRI are not necessarily historic resources for purposes of SEQA.
Well, I don't see why we should include all the HRI in our motion.
No, I wasn't intending to.
We're referring to includes, but. Well, we're not trying to include, uh, protect individual historic resources. We're trying to include overall areas that include historic resources that rely on context for significance. Context is a super important criteria for historic resources. And again and again, we have consultants saying, well, all the buildings around it have been demolished, so it doesn't qualify anymore. This is a really big deal.
Way too broad.
I mean, it's all about, I mean, it's like moving zoning.
Okay, okay.
And it, it does the job.
Hoping, hoping, look, this is a, this is a sentence that is not actually, like, this is, we're reserving the right. So all I'm saying is, DAFF will explore, the city will explore zoning, reorganization, or the creation of new zones to facilitate the advancement of housing goals and/or historic preservation.
Beautiful. I second it. Did I already second it?
That version you hadn't, so thank you.
Okay, let's have a roll call vote.
Um, Commissioner Fondabarnardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor.
Yeah. And now actually, I'm going to abstain. I'm going to abstain from this. I, I just think it's too broad.
Yeah, it is too broad.
Um, okay, moving on. Anything else on 1J? You know, that was a big ticket item.
Why did it go away, 1J that was crossed out? Sustainable and healthy communities, where did that go?
That became policy, um, sorry, I'm trying to find it. So it, it got moved from the programs because there's a lack of specificity about how you would report metrics and goals. So it, it became policy something. I just can't quite find it right now, but, oh, it became policy, policy 1.5.
Okay, I had one last, I have a question to check my last staff question off the list that I pre-prepared. Um, can I ask it now since it's related to this?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, we talked about this last meeting. I'm still confused. If we're opening up the housing element and we are opening up the loose, which we are because we have to amend the loose, why do we not have to then do an environmental justice element and update our safety element? Because I thought that if we open more than one, and housing and loose is more than one, then we have to do the EJ and the safety.
Katie, that's probably a question for you.
Okay, I'll take a stab at it. Um, so, so it's not clear if it's, if, if the two whole updates, like when you went through the loose process, or if it's just opening up to make amendments for consistency with another one, I will say that. However, I will also say that, um, we are aware of the necessity to start, um, you know, to undertake those elements. And so I think, you know, it's definitely something that's on planning's radar and something that HCD did note for us. And so we're working towards, um, those updates in the future.
So could I make a suggestion that we acknowledge the, I mean, y-you'll do what's legally, like what the legally sound thing is here, but should we not acknowledge somewhere in the housing element that, yeah, to, we, we intend to update our EJ and our safety elements in, you know, consistent with state law? So that if they lag it again, we can say, yeah, on page 53, we acknowledge that?
It is, that language is provided in chapter one.
Okay. All right.
Sean, are you happy with that, or can we move on?
No, I'm, I'm happy, as long as staff is happy with it, I'm happy with it. I just don't want us to get dinged for not doing it if we have to do it. I'm looking to eliminate all opportunities for HCD to ding us. That's it.
Actually, we're allowed to. So just to be clear, if we are out of compliance with state law, we are out of compliance with other aspects of state law, not state housing law.
Okay.
If that, if that helps.
Oh, it, it helps, yeah. I mean, if we're going to go, we might as well go big.
Okay, let's keep going. 2A.
Well, I'm uncomfortable with the, uh, the no parking. Um, I'm wondering if we should revisit that. If this is moderate income housing, and you're expecting people to do all of their transit via scooters or light rail or the big blue bus, uh, I don't think it's going to work. Though, uh, I need to see some, some parking there. It can be reduced, but it can't be zero.
Back, Commissioner Fresco, and then Commissioner Lambert.
It just says minimum requirements. It doesn't mean they can't do it. They can build what they need. So it is basically what you said.
So we had a really long conversation about this last time.
Yeah, we did.
So I would like to propose that if you have a motion, that you make a motion and see if you have a second.
Okay. So I would say that we should have reduced parking requirements, not minimum parking.
Uh, so the motion of Fondabarnardi, is there a second? No second. Okay, anything else on 2A? Commissioner Raskin?
I just want to note, I'm not, uh, waiving my objection about this, uh, program in general. Uh, I continue to object to it for the record. Thanks.
Okay, uh, Program 2B.
I would just, uh, can I suggest updating it to be consistent with, um, uh, SB 728, if it's signed, which it might be before Friday?
What is that?
That's the affordable housing, being able to acquire, um, being able to acquire inclusionary units.
I would sort of posit, Sean, that if it passes, um, we'll have to comply with the law. I don't know that we really say we're going to comply with the law.
Exactly.
Commissioner Lambert?
I would just, um, I want to know what people think about this, that if, this is the first right of refusal, right?
Yeah.
Um, what about extending that also to developers who are doing off-site housing obligation? Because a lot of times the developer will buy a site for a nonprofit for 100% affordable housing as an off-site obligation. Do we extend it to them?
And I read it. I'm not sure that it only applies to onsite, but perhaps we should make it specific that it applies to both onsite and off-site affordable. I think that's what I hear.
Well, I, I would, it's kind of different. The offsites would be under the AHPP versus CCSM going out and finding a piece of property and just buying it. This would be an off-site obligation for a market rate project. Should they get first right of refusal too? Because they would then just pass-
I think, if I may, if, if I may, um, I, I don't think we need to get to that level of specificity. There's, there's a lot of details in creating an ordinance like this, which is why there's a bit of a longer timeline. Um, the, the way this program is written is ambivalent to onsite, offsite, or for whatever purpose. It's just acquiring land. So I don't think we need to get into those details with this program.
Commissioner Lambert, are you satisfied with that?
I'm particularly satisfied with that because I think it should be extended to, and maybe when we actually develop the ordinance we can, to someone who's buying a piece of property for a nonprofit for an off-site obligation.
Duly noted.
I, I, at this point, you know.
I am, uh, Program, oh, Commissioner Landris.
All right, I just, I, because you asked me and I, and I wanted to make sure we, we did our homework here. So in the, the, the bill likely to be signed, but it's, it, because it's a, um, it is a right of first refusal ordinance that we're talking about here, um, the, and, and it doesn't, well, if, this is maybe, this is maybe getting into the weeds at the same level, but essentially, if, um, if you're talk, this is about buying state density bonus, um, units that are, that are, um, for sale units, and it's very unlikely to occur in Santa Monica because of rental properties. But if we are talking about a right of first refusal ordinance and we do want it to be SB 78, 728 compliant, then we probably want to specify that it applies to the acquisition of entitlements as well as the acquisition of, of the actual properties.
Sean, we have no idea what you're talking about.
Okay.
At least I don't.
Okay. Uh, I'll, I, I would rephrase it, but I would take more time, and I think DAFF can take a look at it and see what the ordinance should say in order to be compliant with 728.
If they understood you.
Okay, Program 2C. Um. And now we got, um, correspondence on this. Does anybody want to take that up?
Isn't this where we eliminated the percentages?
Yeah, right.
Well, we did eliminate the percentage, we eliminated the distribution.
That's right, exactly.
But the, the distributions come back up in, in this?
Right.
I do have-
Wait a minute. We, we eliminated both the percentage, we eliminated the base affordability of 15%, and we eliminated, we had two separate votes, and we eliminated the distribution of units.
Oh, we didn't, we didn't do them percentage basis, I don't think.
Yes, we did. And if that was not the intent of this commission, then we need to reverse that. But we had two separate motions. One was a motion to eliminate the percentages that's starting at 15%. And the second was to eliminate the distribution.
Can we have an instant replay?
Well, we, we did both. What we didn't do was eliminate unit mix, which may not be in this, but it might-
That, that's something different.
I thought we retained the percentages.
We just said that it was, no, we didn't. We just said it was going to be higher offsite than onsite. Right, that's my understanding.
Okay. I do have one addition, actually.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, when we discussed this, it's actually in the staff report, we said we wanted to increase the threshold for small projects for triggering AHPP, and I haven't seen this anywhere in the programs, and I would like to. So instead of four units triggering AHPP, it should be six.
Okay, so is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Based on Paul's study.
Right. And the optimist.
Any discussion of that item?
Oh, is the idea that instead of getting those three-unit condos, we, we get five-unit condos, but they still wouldn't have affordable? Is that, so we get more housing?
It's whatever, whatever the parcel will accommodate. If it's six, it's six, if it's five, it's five, and four. But right now, we're just saying three units because no one wants to trigger AHPP.
Right, okay.
Okay, can I have a roll call vote on that, please?
Hey, can we just clarify what six means? Because my understanding is that six, even six units can't have affordable. It's seven, the seventh unit would be affordable.
No, no, it'd be, it'd be one out of six.
So five, five market plus one affordable?
Yeah, exactly. I think Paul found that feasible.
Well, I don't think, I think it was seven units, six affordable, six market, one affordable.
Can staff clarify that? And perhaps while they're looking, I can propose another change?
No, it's, uh, one out of the six.
One out of six.
One out of six, correct.
That's what I thought.
Okay, let's go.
Okay, Commissioner Fondabarnardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
No.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor?
Yes. Um, in Ms. Lermwood's letter, there are two proposed changes, which I agree with both of them. Um, one is that I think that the affordable housing mix and bedroom type should mirror the density bonus law, basically. So your percentage of, um, bedrooms in the affordable unit should be the same as your percentage of bedrooms in the market rate unit. Um, and then, actually, we don't, yeah, well, I know that we eliminated the 555, I'm going to call it that, but, um, in the event that it gets put back in, I would like to make sure that any fractional units that result, percentage of a mix of total housing units shall be aggregated into whole affordable housing. I.e., any resulting fraction shall be added to other resulting fraction. Does that make sense?
No. It should never be more than the required amount of inclusionary units.
Oh, thank you. Right.
I just have a question. Elisa, if you have a market rate project that's all studios and ones, for example, don't you want some family affordable units in that?
I think that's really hard from a design perspective.
That's true.
Um, so I guess I'd say no.
Yeah, well, the issue, the issue is that we have an exemption for a studio, for all studio apartments. So if you have studios and ones, you have to do the twos. So that perversely incentivizes people to go and do studios only because that's the only exemption. So if we were, if we follow what Elisa's proposing, we eliminate that perverse incentive and we probably get a better mix. Um, I wanted to, um, clarify, are, is it dealer's choice if that, with that whole unit rounded? Because I think there was some, there was some issue where you would end up with a, you might end up with an extra unit. Um, would we eliminate that extra unit, or would we allow the develop, would we allow the developer to choose what to do with it?
Well, I think there's two options. I think one is if you are not, if you're basically saying, if it's 15 units, it's still 15 units, not 16 units, even if it rounds out, honey. And I would say that the, the ex, that, the unit that, the fractional unit has to be at a low in, at a lower income level. It cannot be at a moderate income level, it needs to be at a lower income level.
Okay.
Or if you're going to say, well, you do have to do the extra unit, it's dealer's choice. Back, Commissioner Raskin. Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, I, I generally agree with this, but I think this is something that should be fine-tuned as part of the red lines. Um, you know, we've had, we have a lot of issues with our fractional unit, uh, rules right now. Uh, I don't think that we should bake anything into the housing element at this point. Let's, let's come back to it.
Um, I would support that so long as nor is there anything in the housing element that goes the other way, right? So I think the motion is, I will amend my motion to say, you know, the housing elements should not contain anything about the fractional unit. I do, I would like to maintain the motion, though, with respect to the, to be consistent with state law.
You, you got a little quiet when you said consistent with, I'm sorry.
All right, consistent with state law for the, um, the bedroom, next.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Uh, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, sorry, I'm, I'm a bit confused as to what you're voting, what you're voting on. This is, this is the, the, um-
So this is 2C, and the motion is, number one, don't have anything in the housing element that speaks to the frac, fraction. And that may be irrelevant now since we took out the 555.
Right.
And then two, to make the requirement for unit and unit mixed bedroom type the same as the state density bonus law, which basically requires a proportional personality for both market rate and affordable for bedrooms.
Okay, um, we might have to see where that fits. This program is about the AHPP. That kind of a regulation doesn't live within the AHPP, but we'll figure out where to, where the right home is for that. Okay. Sorry, that, that's where I was getting a little bit- Sorry, that's where I was getting a little bit confused.
But does, is the current requirement, is the current unit mix requirement in the AHPP now?
It is not, it is not. It only applies to tier two projects, so I think there's some concepts been being blended. Well, I understand what you're saying, yeah, okay. Okay. And then, and I heard something about increasing from four to six units, which I think, I can't remember whether we voted on that already.
We did vote on that.
You did, okay. All right. Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Ellis voted no.
Oh, no, yeah. Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Chair Pastor?
Yeah. Okay, also do we need to revise the timetable? No, it's not the AHPP. What, 2D, update the density bonus ordinance?
Chair, we're coming up on three hours. Any chance of a break?
Four hours, four hours.
Four hours, four hours.
Sure, let's take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Okay, let's just give Vice Chair Reese a minute. And who else did we miss? Commissioner Raskin. There's Vice Chair Reese, and there's Commissioner Raskin. Okay. 2D, isn't David? I, number one, want to change the Sorry, staff, are you, staff?
Yes, we are here.
Yes, we are here.
Thanks, James. I would like to change the timing for the density bonus to be at the end of the year. And I would like, so that's one motion. Also, well, let's vote on that first.
I second.
Okay, Commissioner Fresco?
Can we just double check and check that it's possible? Because that's pretty soon. The end of the year. Of this year, is soon.
Commissioner Lambert?
The council has made it pretty clear they want to comply with state law, and that would mean updating or actually doing a density bonus ordinance. So I don't think we could put this off. I think Elisa's right, it has to be done as quickly as possible.
Did you hear what I said, or was I breaking up? I was asking staff if that is physically.
No, I didn't hear that. No, you were all jumbled up.
Sorry.
So I think that the, you know, just doing the changes to density bonus that kind of implement the interim process that we have now, those red lines we obviously brought forward to the commission before. However, I would note that, you know, it's intertwined with the FAR heights, AHPP, like, they kind of all come together as a package. You kind of can't really, like, pick and choose what goes, doesn't go. So, you know, bring forward just density bonus on its own isn't particularly complicated unless there is, you know, a lot of outreach and feedback. It seems to be around the menu. There certainly seems to be a lot of opinions and discussion around that. The reality of bringing something perfect back by the end of the year, I'm not, I'm not sure. We'll, we'll see where we get, you know, with, with the outreach that has to be done to properly build that program. You know, there might be some part of it, but I don't, I don't know about the whole thing. And I think based on the commission's discussion at your September 8 meeting, it seemed that you were looking for like a comprehensive holistic thing, which is, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure that the end of the year is realistic for that.
Commissioner Lambert?
There are some imperatives that I feel, other than doing this quickly. One is, it's very confusing for, I don't think that density bonus and the AHPP should be additive. I think it should be one or the other, because it's terribly confusing to put the density bonus on top of the AHPP, because moderate income, and whatever we're doing, they've got to be separate programs. I firmly believe that. And I think we also have to consider the SB 35 angle, which is 20% low income, and make that a separate program too from the AHPP. So I'm not sure why layering is really an issue. It's not an issue for me.
Well, the fact is, the city has an inclusionary program and state density bonus law allows that. You know, that if someone, there is no additive. If you meet the city's inclusionary program, you know, by definition, you're eligible for a density bonus. No, I mean, that's factual, that is what it is. So, you know, it is, density bonus law is being implemented now under council direction. We got that direction in June from council to implement an interim process pending the adoption of an ordinance. So the key pieces in terms of applicants applying for density bonus, having bonus apply to FARs, eligibility for concessions and incentives under state law, those are all you know, and applicants are able to apply for that at the moment. But, you know, this is a program that we're building together in terms of these multiple pieces, as we've discussed before, in terms of the interplay of the FARs. They build from the desired inclusionary housing goal, right? We've talked about this for months. In terms of, we tested 10%, 15%, 20%, 25%, a huge range of things. And, you know, these the goal of the 15% was something council decided to move forward with. And so those are the FARs that were, were key to that. And, you know, the heights are also associated with the FARs. And then, you know, we were explaining that density bonus kind of just sits on top of that. You know, it's not integrated, it's not baked in. It is a program that is in state law and you can, you know, do what the zoning code allows, and then you can apply density bonus on top of that. That's that's how it's implemented.
I, can I say something? I really do not understand the resistance to having two separate programs, the AHPP and the density bonus. I don't understand why that is a problem to do. That's what LA does.
No, that's different. So may I, may I, could you, could you explain to me what your concern is? Because, so since 1990, since like the 1990s, the city has had an inclusionary housing program. Minimum inclusionary requirements. Right? So are you suggesting that if they do state density bonus, they don't have to meet our minimum inclusionary requirements?
Well, aren't, aren't the density bonuses' percentages higher than our inclusionary requirements?
In some instances, yes. So if somebody, but, so, so if somebody meets our minimum AHPP, say when it was, say when it was the 5% ELI. Somebody came in and actually produced 10% units, they would be entitled to whatever the 10% incentives and concessions are under density bonus. Right? So there, it's additive in the sense that you meet our minimum requirements. You're entitled to whatever you're entitled to under state density bonus law, based on those minimum requirements. If you add more units, you get more.
Well, I don't understand, they can't be separate. Go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, in that example, I don't know that that's a great example, because you said ELI. And so if I required ELI through the housing production in the city, I'm not qualifying for well, I guess.
It's very low. It's very low. You're at 5% very low. I was just using that because that was like our minimum, and sometimes people would actually maybe produce more than that. Nobody's gonna produce more than our 15%, right?
I think maybe the bigger problem I was having is if, if we had these situations where you had to do 5% at one, 10% at another, then it comes very cumbersome. If we get away from that, maybe it's not as big of an issue. I don't know that that, that our direction tonight is gonna stand the test with the council. And then we're gonna end up with this situation where they conflict with each other and they don't work well together. And that's what I think we're trying to get away from.
Exactly.
So can I make a suggestion? I agree with all of that, that there be direction, and I'm not sure if it belongs to the program or if it's in a policy, that basically not withstanding I mean, the problem with the 555 is that you, it basically undermines the density bonus law.
Yes.
And it was stated at council that the reason that it was proposed was to quote unquote temper the density bonus law, which I think is not consistent with furthering fair housing or anything we're doing in the housing element. So part of the problem with the 555 is that you don't, you only would qualify for one concession. Whereas you're providing a 15% income restricted housing, but then you only get one concession. So in reality, you're not, you may not get the concessions you need to build the building that you you get the density bonus for. So what I would like to see, and I'm not sure how the language exactly is, but that basically if the income distribution gets replaced, that there be a mechanism that allows the same amount of concessions as you would get for your density bonus for, say, 11% ELI, or, sorry, 11% very low income, which you would get three concessions for. So I'm not, like, the mechanics of that need to be worked out, but that's the I think that addresses some of what I'm hearing from Mr. Lambert and Reed.
Yeah, I think that addresses the.
Sorry, can I clarify? Are you saying that you would like to provide, like, sort of like a, almost a mix? Like, an option to mix how, like, it's 15% and that an applicant could choose how they come up to 15?
No.
No. Oh, okay.
What I'm saying is, so let's say you have, so like, under what had been proposed in this red line, right? You would have to do 15%, and then 5% would be very low income, 5% would be low income, and 5% would be moderate, right? That's how you were proposing it. Do you agree with that, James?
Right, that's what council directed.
Right, that's what council directed. So under that scenario, you would come in, but you would only be entitled to one concession under the state density bonus law. And so the problem with that is then you have a developer who gets a density bonus, but is only entitled to one concession. And so they may need a height modification and a setback modification to make the building work. And you have prevented them from doing that unless they provide another 5%, say, very low income. So then it would be 10% very low income, 5% low income, and 5% moderate, which may make the project infeasible.
I don't, I don't quite understand that calculus, because we have increased the heights in some places, two floors, we have increased the FAR. And to make it work exactly that way by right, without having to use a concession, the concession. without having to use a concession, the concession is just flexibility. So I don't quite understand, oh, the 555, if you're at 15, how does that really disincentivize you?
Because.
Because.
Let me turn it over to you. Because Mario, the, the number of incentives, the concessions that you get is based on the amount of, the amount and the type of affordable units that you provide.
Right. But you can also use your minor modification as part of that too. You have, they have so many paths up that mountain that I don't see why you wouldn't, because what's happening now, we see uh, basically clustering everything either extremely low to reduce the percentages. Uh, and so the idea of spreading it out was the idea to get some distribution at the marketplace. So there would be many, many choices at many different price points. Uh, because otherwise it's just, everyone just goes to the lowest number and.
Because it seems, because the whole point of the, I mean, number one, the 555 is not consistent with the RIN allocation.
Right.
Terms of the income level. So that's what my other issue is.
Then, then you're saying we have to tune the distribution to the RIN allocation, whatever that is, you know?
I just don't think we should be undermining the density bonus.
That's exactly right.
I'm, I'm not sure that we are. It's like.
We are because you can't get the concessions and incentives you should really be entitled to.
And if you're going through a density bonus, can you get a concession or a waiver or modification that's in our code? Or do you have to go through an incentive and is that going to be on the list? And again, I come back to what, what Elisa was saying is if you're building this debt, you're affordable and you got all these different income levels, you're making it very difficult to finance. And you need to have the discretion to have concessions, whether you need a yard adjustment here, an open space reduction. You need to be able to get to your three incentives. And the way it's set up now, it is not clearly set up that way. Now, if staff can come up with a way to, to allow us to do that, that's fine. But the whole point is to try to make these projects as feasible as possible. And in doing that, we need to be able to build in concessions.
Well, again, I think we've already given the big concession, which the FAR increased over the whole city. We're in effect rezoning the whole city. We're giving them a height bonus in some cases, two floors. Some cases, three floors for 100% affordable. And so at some point you say, well, how many other help, how much other help do you really need?
Well, in a, in a, in a real, in a real density bonus project, they're giving you density right off the bat. So the FAR is consistent with the density, is consistent with your density. So we're not giving them anything more than, than the, that's already in the density bonus today. You get increased units by right. So we're not, you're not really giving them all that extra right now. All you're doing is giving them more floor so they can build in more density into that project.
Elisa?
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Lambert.
Um, the, the percentages that we have before in the housing element were based on feasibility studies that were not reflective of the state density bonus law. They were reflective of the HPP. And the percentage of the HPP are much lower than the percentages of the density bonus program. So our FAR and height stuff that's in this housing element is not based on what you need for the density bonus program. Based on the HPP, which is a lower percentage than density bonus. Right?
Yeah, I agree with that. Well, I guess my other question is, well, no, I don't have another question. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna try a motion and if it fails, it fails. So I'm gonna propose that staff figure out a way that, and it could be in a, again, it could be in a policy, that if a, an income distribution is put back into place, that there be a mechanism that developers can get a similar number of concessions as is allowed under the state density bonus law.
I would second that, Elisa, but I, I still don't understand why we can have separate, two separate paths for developers. Density bonuses or HPP. I don't understand why that's a problem.
Always going to be entitled to and to some level of density bonus if they meet the HPP, right? So you wouldn't do HPP and not get density bonus.
But the density bonus percentage is much higher than the HPP.
You can go voluntarily higher, right? Though if density bonus is all completely voluntary, right? So you, i- in, it's actually built for jurisdictions that don't have inclusionary housing requirements. So you get to, you get additional market rate units for providing a certain number of affordable units. The city has a baseline of affordable units that you need to provide through its inclusionary program. So when you provide those units, you are entitled to a certain number of density bonus. If you provide more than what is required by the HPP, then you get whatever is, you're entitled to under density bonus as well.
Great.
That's why they're not two tracks.
Jim, doesn't LA have two tracks, the T O C and the density bonus program?
Yeah, but those are, I mean, those are, they are two separate incentive programs.
But it's not, but LA doesn't have an inclusionary requirement. It's like a couple specifically.
I mean, I could, in, in, Central City West has an inclusionary and I can do density bonus on top of that. So I guess there would be a place where you have, you can do both.
Okay. So are you seconding my motion or are you not seconding?
Yes.
Yes. So let's, can we take a vote? Let's see how it goes.
Please, please repeat it one more time. I apologize.
I mean, I, I basically want staff to look for a way that if there is, if there is an income distribution, the 555, that we, we figure out a way to give them more than one concession.
Yes.
With just the base 555. Because I have a feeling that when we really get down to it, height is going to be a concession, right? Height on top of what the permitted heights are are going to be a concession as is additional FAR, as is yards, as is open space, right? Those are all going to be concessions. So that's my motion. We do a bulk vote.
Commissioner Nefanda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Chair Pastor.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, everyone. So did we, we didn't really, I had made a motion on the timing, but then we heard from staff that perhaps that wasn't feasible. So I just want to make sure we close the loop on that. So I'm gonna withdraw my motion. I'm actually late, but I withdraw. Commissioner Landris?
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure I understand. I'm with you on your motion. And I was trying to parse this. Is it your sense that if someone, I know that the HPP is required, the inclusionary program is required. But is, to simplify, to try, I'm trying to sort of wrap my head around this. Are you suggesting that if there were no HPP requirement, that the amount of affordability expressed by the HPP is equivalent to at least two concessions in a density bonus law program?
You know, I'm not, I, 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 I'm not sure. I, that's why I would want someone to look at it.
It's actually one.
You think it's equivalent to one?
I just read it.
Well, no, if, if you have to do 555, you are only entitled to one. But I think.
That's not my question. That's not my question.
I think you're asking, is it like economically or something?
Yes. Now, I'm getting, if, if we didn't have an HPP and somebody did 555 on a project, would they in another jurisdiction be read, be eligible for two state density bonus concessions as opposed to?
Yes. If you did 555, the 5% very low entitles you to one concession.
Okay.
5% low does not entitle you to one concession and you get no concessions from moderate.
Right. So what would entitle you to a second concession in addition to 5% low? 10% low. I mean, you have to increase those numbers. And if you want, we can pull out the code and look at it right now. But I think it's from very low, you get one concession at five, you get two at 10%, three at 15%. So what we've now just said, what we've now just said is that we want to try to do two concessions for the 555. Because we want to.
If the 555 gets reinstated. Yeah.
If the 555 gets reinstated. Okay. We want to make sure there's parity between the two programs. So you're not being penalized. Yeah, we're not being penalized. Well, let's, let's back, let's back this up for a second because I'm not, I don't want to undo the vote, but, but I just want to follow this through. Let's look at the incentive that we've now created. Let's say the, do we want, on the basis of this discussion, are we saying to put back the 555 or are we saying not to put back the 555?
We're saying not to put it back, but if it gets that, put back in despite our best.
I understand. But council's looking for some clarity. So what I'm saying is, what approach is going to draw, is going to maximize the production of inclusionary units, leaving out the 555 and relying on multiple density, multiple concessions or putting it back in and accompanying it with two concessions? You see what I'm asking, right? Like, have we just created a weird pathway? What perversity are we accidentally creating?
My intent was essentially to equate them. You have either or.
Are they equated?
I don't know. That's what staff has to look at.
Great. Okay. My, my sum, okay. Mario.
Commissioner Nefanda Bernardi?
Oh, okay. Well, I, I'd like to move on from this. I, I'm not going to raise some other issues. Just, let's keep going.
Okay. And I think we'll hash this out when we do the code amendments as well. Okay, 2E.
I, I would love to hash this out on Friday, if it's analyzed. Because I would love to send council a clear message. I'm worried about sending them an ambivalent message, right?
Well, but that's, I mean, my clear message is take out the 555.
Okay. All right. We'll follow you there.
2E. Um, on 2E, I'm gonna make a motion or a suggestion. Um, I think I'd like staff to have the flexibility that when we are looking at RFPs for city-owned sites, that if there are appropriate revenue generating uses that can accompany the affordable housing and that there should be a synergy. So maybe it's like, right, it's a hotel and the hotel workers get to live in housing or that might be a fair housing issue. But some kind of, just the way it's written now is just only affordable housing. And so I just want to give us some flexibility to look at appropriate revenue generating uses.
I agree. Like market rate housing too.
This is city land. This is city land.
I know, but, but Elisa's correct in that if you need, if you need that to make the project feasible, because we have no money, then maybe you need to do that.
Uh, Commissioner Raskin?
I, I think you're gonna run into surplus land act issues if it's a profit-making venture. But I'll, that's just my two cents.
Well, it, I, I think that's going to depend on how the city, whether the city is disposing of the land or whether it's developing itself.
That's true.
But I think that's an interesting thought. I mean, I think that's an interesting point for staff to look at. That's why I'm just advocating for flexibility, not mandatory. Sorry, Commissioner Lambert.
I think for me, I would not, I would not support market rate housing on city-owned land. I would however, be open to like 200% AMI on city-owned land. A maximum of 200% of AMI. I would not support unlimited market rate housing. But we have a, we don't have housing for people who make 200% of AMI. And so if the city can produce that, great. I call that social housing. Like the Vienna model.
I would amend my motion to say that the city has the flexibility to investigate the possibility of uh, revenue generating uses that are the synergy with the housing, 200% of AMI and 200% of AMI.
Second.
Any discussion? We'll call vote, please.
Commissioner Nefanda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco? I think you're muted.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor.
Yeah. I have another. Um, I also have one other question on, sorry, let's take any one minute, on this, which is, it bums me out a little bit that, um, we're looking at December 31st of 2023. And so I just wanted to note from staff, like, is that really the staff do, given everything that's on your plate? I just want to ask a question.
Uh, much of the work.
Responsible for the RFP, is it planning or is it like?
No, it's, no, it's actually largely the housing division. As you're well aware, they're extremely short-staffed at the moment. So, you know, we want to make sure we provide enough time for that to happen.
Okay. Fair enough. Commissioner Lambert?
I, 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 I mean, I defer to your judgment and their ability, their, you know, time constraints. But, um, we already have an RFP that conceivably could be a template for future RFPs on parking structure three. So I would hope that, you know, something could be learned from that and it's be done more quickly. I also have a question. In the case of parking structure three, we issued the RFP long before the property was declared surplus. Is that something we could do to make the process go faster?
I'm sorry, what was your question? It was done before the first land act and.
The RFP was issued almost two years ago on PS3 and we still haven't picked a developer. But that was long before the surplus, the land was declared surplus.
So I think there were changes in the law that happened during that time period. So, um, yeah. So I think that's really what, what happened there. We could look into it, of course.
And by the way, I talked, I talked to one of the proposers today and, and the, believe it or not, the proposals were still okay after two years.
Heidi, if they, if, if the RFP went out before the, the surplus land act changes were made, do, are we exempt? Or do we have to, is it that you have to award?
I, you know, I would have to check that. I don't know.
Okay. Uh, Sean?
Yeah, I just, um, I, again, my, it, it makes, I don't like the December 31st, 2023 deadline either. Um, I think I'm worried, I, because staff is overburdened. I would like to request, and I don't know if there's a way we can put this or if we can just make this direction. But, you know, there's money coming from the state now, new money. There's money potentially coming from the feds, you know, we never know, but potentially coming. I would like to make sure that because this is a little bit backburnered, that we don't accidentally miss out on funding opportunities for this housing. And so I'd like to say more explicitly that we are really gonna, we really want to encourage the council to make sure that we're tracing, that they, that we are aggressively chasing dollars that may be coming available and that we prioritize resourcing grant writers or other analysts in the housing division or the, or, or, or planning to realize that. Because I would hate for us to miss the boat because we're like, oh, we don't have to do that till 2023. I don't know how we say that. And I would defer to staff to find a way to express that, but I think we should say it very clearly.
Elisa, can I say something? Yeah. My, my impression is that the state money is actually, um, if it's, if it's operated like it normally is, the developer actually applies for it, it's not the city. But the developer needs land to apply for it on. So that would be a reason to expedite the city property process. So that, that's my impression on it. Jim, do you know otherwise? You're, you're muted. You're, you're muted.
I don't have the answer to that, but I would like to hear what Commissioner Raskin has to say.
I, yeah, I, I was just going to say that I, I think having voted on the last motion, I, I think that if we were to go to 200% AMI on a property, we'd still run into surplus land act issues. I, I think we're gonna have to think that through very carefully with city staff. I don't want to be judged too much, but you know, our, our goal, of course, is to get as much, uh, uh, you know, to help those who are worst off in our community, our, on our city land. And I think I don't know, I think, I think we all agree with that.
Well, I think the question is, do we try to push this timeline up a little bit? And I've heard a lot of conversation about we should push it up a little bit. With the exception of staff who is highlighting their their book. So can we find a happy medium?
Well, I'm acknowledging that staff is over, I mean, we saw Jane and then she disappeared. I'm acknowledging that staff is overworked. I'm actually suggesting that when it comes to budget season, that we actually encourage the city to prioritize the hiring of the appropriate budget analysts so that we can be competitive for these dollars and we can actually do the work that may need, so that we can maybe process this on the timeframe needed to meet these state or federal deadlines as they appear. I'm, I'm suggesting that we need to allocate resources to be able to catch those dollars and that right now we're in may not, we may, I don't know, but I feel like we may not be staffed appropriately to catch those dollars.
Adam, mention or?
The, the dollars are going to developers, not cities.
But this, I think he, he is saying we, we should get money to hire staff so that we can set up our process.
Yes. Yes, I'm saying, because we're, we're, we have a political dialogue in our city saying the state is telling us to produce all this affordable housing, but the money is not available. Right? So if the money is going to become available, our city has to be staffed adequately to do the things that need to happen so that the applicants for the money can get that money, whether the applicant, whether we're the applicant or La Casa gets passed in next session or, you know, or, or the, the, you know, AB 679 or or, or the applicant, you know, a developer puts in for the money, any of those things. So my motion is that we add a sentence to the housing element committing to prioritize staffing to maximize our competitiveness for affordable housing dollars.
I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
May, can I, I will second that if I think it's not a program, I think it's a policy.
Yes, it's a policy.
Under the program.
Yeah, that's fine.
If we.
That's friendly to me. Is it friendly to you, Jim?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, you already seconded.
All right.
My back's hurting. In case anybody wonders what's going on.
You just want to know, do those things work? Do they work? Does that thing work?
Yeah, Commissioner Raskin.
I mean, you know, I, I, I support this, but we're getting just so specific into the minutia of implementation here, you know. I, I think that we can trust that our, our city staff will do what they need to do to get this done.
But I'm actually sending a message to council and asking council to make that commitment. Yeah, through the housing.
I agree with what Commissioner Raskin says. We're getting in the.
Sam, you just mated yourself.
I agree with Commissioner Raskin. We are getting into the weeds, but we have got into the weeds with this one. We are right next to a vote. Let's vote and move to the next.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landrus?
Yes.
Chair Raskin?
Yes.
Chair Reese?
Yes.
Chair Pastor?
Yes. Two, are we on two G?
Yes.
Anyone on two G? I think I have a question.
Wait, did we? This is, well, wait a second. Before we go to two G, there's a whole other section of two F. On the bottom of 29. Well, we were talking about two E. We haven't done two F.
Oh, okay. Anyone have anything?
Well, we had a conversation earlier about how we wanted to use housing trust fund money. So I think we should look at this, I'm not making a claim one way or another, but I think we should take a look at this paragraph and make sure we like it. Because we do not, it does not mention acquisition here. And so do we want to? What's our position on acquisition? Council wanted to focus on production, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I don't have any proposed changes. Commissioner Lambert?
Are you talking about acquisition, acquisition of existing housing?
Yeah. Like Virginia Avenue.
It doesn't help Reina. I mean, it helps the people who are living in it, but it doesn't help Reina.
Well, it helps, well.
Commissioner Reese?
Well, I think this came up earlier because of our discussions about, I mean, at least I brought it up earlier because of our discussion of segregation and does it make any sense to try to buy an existing multifamily unit close to or near the area of influence and make those deed restricted affordable? And I think that there's some value in that. So I would suggest that we add in, we, I will make a motion to add in language to have acquisition be part of the fun, what we use our funds for as long as it is for deed restricting current market rate dwelling units, multifamily dwelling units in areas proximate to areas of affluence.
Okay.
Who seconded?
John.
I did.
Is there any discussion? We have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
abstain.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
No.
Commissioner Landrus?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor?
Yes. Hey, two G, I have a question about the is special needs household, housing and special needs households include permanent supportive housing?
Yeah, I would generally be in that umbrella.
Okay, so we don't need to add that as a specific?
No.
Thank you. Then I have nothing on two G. Anyone else on two G? Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, sorry, unless I, I missed this, were the deleted portions moved? More else, I just want to track where those were moved to.
Those are policies?
Yeah, it's in your staff report. It went to policy 2.7, 2.8 and 2.9.
Got it, yeah. That triggered my memory. Sorry, it's late, late, late in the day.
Okay, two H. Two I. Two J. Okay. Um, so I want to acknowledge that it's now 10:10 and we talked about trying to stop at 10 tonight. So what is the commission's pleasure? I would be up for doing about another 45 minutes. Are you guys up for that? Let's do it. Yeah, I mean, let's try to make it through. I think we, we actually have gotten more efficient.
We're really good.
Uh, three A. My, oh, Commissioner Lambert?
I believe that the definition of housing to be replaced goes beyond what SB 330 says. So I would suggest that we either cite that government code section where the housing that needs to be replaced is or we quote directly from SB 330.
I second that.
May I? Yeah, except, wait, friendly amendment? Except it's SB eight now, which has been signed.
Okay.
It's actually, yeah. Actually, if I may, it's actually neither of those, this requirement. It's actually from Housing Element Law. And it has to do with the fact that the city uses a large percentage of non-vacant sites. So this is, this is an additional requirement.
I guess my concern, you know, the reason I made the motion was that this, this includes market rate housing, it could be $10,000 a month in rent. Why would you replace that?
Don't think.
It says sites that currently have residential use or within the past five years have been rent controlled or deed restricted. So this includes market rate housing, as it reads, that could be very expensive housing.
Well, we can take another look, but it's taken straight from the statutory requirement with respect to, again, with respect to the fact that the city relies heavily on non-vac, well, exclusively on non-vacant sites as that's defined by State Housing Law.
But you cite SB 330.
In addition to?
It's a two paragraph program, yeah. And, and I think to clarify that second paragraph, the one in the, I, I guess we put maybe the two in the wrong place, but it's basically, it qualifies. It either has an existing use or had a use that was vacated and demolished. So the qualifier is that it was occupied by persons and families of lower, very low income. So it's not just market rate housing. So it's just meant to be existing, vacated or demolished.
But it says or, it says or, Jane, it says or.
Yeah, but I don't think it's read that. I mean, we'll, we'll look at again, this is as, if this is taken straight from Housing Element Law.
Well, check on that or, because it doesn't, it reads very strangely.
Yeah, except that as, I, I think we need to that's the section, what's, what's? What's the section reference? It's 5915. I, I think, I, I think we need to look at S, I think we need to look again at SB eight because we want to be, I mean, may, it may not be, um, our reference, I recognize that this is coming out of Housing Element Law, but we need to be really careful about what the, what replacement rules we're using and what applies, because I don't want to give the wrong impression.
But this does weigh beyond.
This is, this is six-five, SB eight amends, has some notwithstanding 65915 language. So it, staff should probably just look at this before Friday. Yeah.
Three B? Three C? Three D?
Are we, wait, hang on, three C? Can we refer to 787 here? I know it's moderate rate, but I think we, we said, we said, we covered that already, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And we've also had a lot of objections to referring to laws that haven't been signed yet.
I understand.
This is not moderate income housing though, Sean.
Well, there's a question about what it would, I mean, that's my, so this is actually my question, because if you have a naturally occurring affordable unit that is consistent with moderate income housing, because it happens to be, is there any way to encourage that to be made formally into moderate income housing? I don't know. I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, you know, I, I don't know. I think it's worth asking the question.
We can't use housing trust funds.
No, we can't.
Does anybody have any motion they want to make on that? Three D? Three E? Three F? That's in Fresco. G is in Giraffe.
I have a question about that. I have a question about G.
Yep.
Does our seismic retrofit program, I, I, we need it, okay? I want to make, just wrap my, around my question. Is it a constraint in any form? Do we need to worry that the retrofit program is, is accelerating Ellising or anything that displaces people?
No, I don't see how that would be the case because it would certainly make the building safe.
Yeah, but are there, are we? Are there, are there, are there costs involved that are driving people out of the rental market?
Have you heard of any?
I have not, but I want to ask, yeah. I want to ask staff just to make sure, because this is the place to ask the question.
I just want to note that actually in HCDs of AFFH guidance, they actually cite seismic retrofit as a strategy for community preservation. So they don't consider that as a displacement.
Okay, good. That's, that's great. Okay.
Okay, H is in Henry. I, which I believe has just been moved from a different section. J. And I think that's something that HCD also cited as a preservation program, right? Restricting community conversion.
That's correct.
Okay, look, look how fast that was. Okay, four A. I assume there's going to be some discussion on those. Um, is there a timeframe? Question? I know that was in one of our letters we received. Uh, let me see if I have any. Now, okay, so four A, so four B.
Didn't we already talk about this one?
Please hold. Too many screens. Uh, yeah. Um, okay, four, new four B. Okay, four C.
Right, then you. Oh, can we, four B, we should pause there for a second.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, I would like to be explicit here. We, we referred earlier to the letter, we, when, when Mr. Kutcher called in, we had a brief exchange with him about it in a Q and A, but I'd like to actually kind of move this, and I'm looking for language that would be helpful. What I, what I'd like to get to is community assembly, childcare and nonprofit uses. And I'd like to specifically permit uh, non-residential uses that are consistent with community assembly, childcare and non, I don't know what the nonprofit use dimension is here for these surface parking lot buildings. In other words, what I'm getting at is either for congregations or for nonprofits like the Boys and Girls Club, not the Spot Zone, but as an example, or the Y, or anybody else would want to redevelop. I want to explicitly let them do stuff with their first two floors so that the remaining floors can be allocated to a lot of housing.
Yeah.
And so I'd like to. Yeah, so, because I, I don't think we're actually incentivizing them enough. So I'd like to incentivize them with above-ground floor uses consistent with their mission.
Can I add something?
That's my motion.
I would have a problem. Can I just add something to this section for community, community activities, community services? So it's not like a bunch of nonprofit offices.
Agreed, but, but I'm looking for, I mean, let me be real, let me be real about it. I'm looking for language that would not stop them from opening a social impact cafe, like, you know, Holy Grail, your La La Land, and that's, and that's, and technically that's a restaurant use. So I want to be, but if they need to move their offices across the street so that they can, you know, I'm okay with that. but if they need to move their offices across the street so that they can, you know, I'm okay with that.
Commissioner Raskin.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little bit confused what category of uh uses this is, by to here in this motion? Can you just clarify what the universe is of things that would get this benefit?
So, so what happened was, we talked about incentivizing congregations in the residential areas, turn their parking lots into housing, right? And then we got a letter from the Boys and Girls Club saying, we want to build housing also, but we need more than ground floor uses for our, in our project, in order to be able to retain all the services that we're offering. So I'm thinking to myself, well, when you think about it, there's not a whole heck of a lot of difference in a land use category between a Boys and Girls Club and a church or a synagogue or a mosque. We're talking about community assembly, community service, some education, some childcare, um maybe some athletic facilities in a Boys and Girls Club, maybe even in a church, right? The difference in Santa Monica is that the Boys and Girls Club, the Y, those types of entities are located in our commercial districts, whereas the churches and synagogues are located in residential districts, so we need, that's, that's as far as I go.
I, I get, I get all that, I'm just trying to discern from that some sort of identifiable standard uh to which we'd be applying this.
So perhaps it, because that's something that we need to really drill down on, perhaps it's um to add to community uh, to add to religious congregations, add school and nonprofits, maybe direct services from profits, and then um instruct staff to look at
Thing looks like she might.
An appropriate percentage, yeah.
I, I think we're just trying to figure out what plat, what use classification you're referring to, not, nonprofit is not a use classification, the zoning order, community assembly is, so it'd be very helpful, and, you know, to try and drill down, I, I, I think we're, we're not sure whether this is sounding like a new program, or, because it sounds like you're talking about uh uh non-residential, the zoned um properties. The community assembly uses, of course, are a broad range of uses, and they're kind of all over the city, predominantly, you can think about them in residential districts, although maybe not always, right, they, they, they can, there's the Elks Lodge, you know, just throwing an example out there, not specifically, but, right, that's a community assembly use. But as you're thinking about this new concept, just encourage that you try and fit it within a zoning use classification.
Yeah, sorry, so Commissioner Fresco, I, I'm going to call on you in one minute. So, but does community assembly use cover the girls and boys club or no? I guess that's what I'm confused about.
Um, it's actually something I'm looking at, because we had looked at this in the context of the DCP, so just give me.
Okay, Commissioner Fresco.
Um, I was going to suggest that maybe we allow ancillary uses for the support or expansion of the primary community-serving function of the organization. And then we kind of cover it. And then we can move on.
Yeah, Commissioner Reese.
I was going to say something.
So, can I formulate that into a motion?
Uh, move that we expand this section to, to uh permit ancillary uses, Nina, what Nina said.
Yeah.
For supporters' expansion of the primary community-serving use of the, of the parcel.
On or above the ground floor up to 33% of the unit, of the, of the, of the, of the project.
I don't think we should specify the percentage, I think we should let staff look at it. Commissioner Raskin.
We qualify this uh category as being community-serving, you know, either youth-serving, or, you know, senior-serving, or, or just generally community-serving?
Yeah.
Community and or youth-serving.
Yeah, so if, if, if I can just jump in, um, within the DCP, we did call out uh, hu- community assembly uses, you know, would include sort of private clubs and what have you. Um, it was qualified by nonprofit use-serving, community assembly use. Um, so if that is your intent, it's, it sounds like you want to allow those kinds of uses to have um their community-serving use above the ground floor. Right, but it's not just restricted to the ground floors, it can be the first two floors or what have you, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second? To get the motion with Lambert, sorry, Landry, who's the second?
I'll second.
Yeah, Fresco second, okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner um Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landry?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastor?
Yes. Okay, four C and then Charlie. Four D? Or, oh, five A?
Why are you going really fast?
Okay.
Just, we did four C at the top of the meeting, just, we did, yeah.
And then four D.
Which I think was just moved from elsewhere.
Yeah.
Oh, I had, I had something to say.
Yeah, Commissioner Fresco?
Um, we've had historically displaced households in Santa Monica from much earlier than the 50s. And uh, the first record I found it was 1910 when they uh got ready to build Samo High, so I don't know if that was what city council intended, but that was the, kind of the beginning of the moving around of the segregated groups by the city, so I don't know if you want to say 1910s.
Oh, I see your saying. Um, we could also just delete during the 1950s and 60s.
That would be an even better idea.
Commissioner Raskin.
Well, if you, if you want to go all the way back, I'm Native American resident who were the first to be displaced, so.
I would say like 1835?
Yeah, there was a letter about that in the Daily Press not too long ago, uh, that, uh, you know, we should, we should um, you know, think more broadly about uh the Right Return Program, but um, yeah, I, I don't know, I, I don't know, I, I think we should, we should just be as, as broad as possible here.
Okay, so do we have a motion? Nina, do you want to make a motion?
Uh, I make a motion that we drop those few words. Since we're so fortunate that all of the people who've been displaced are depicted in the mural in City Hall.
Wait, and by those words, you mean during the 1950s and 1960s?
Yeah, sorry.
No, she, no, but don't you mean more than that, because it wasn't just the civic in the tent?
No, we're going to delete the word, oh, historically displaced households in Santa Monica due to urban renewal policies, which are the ones that the city itself is specifically responsible for, even though there have been generations.
What about indigenous people?
Yeah. Can I offer a friendly amendment, address the historical displacement of Santa Monica households that disproportionately impacted low-income communities, communities of color, and indigenous.
Yeah, I think we should.
Nicely done, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, who's the second, sorry, Nina's the first, who's the second?
I am, that's my friendly, just adopted.
Uh, Commissioner Landry's the second, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landry?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Your pastor.
Yes. Okay, five A and five B.
Um, quick question on five B. Uh, is there a reason that it will take us a whole year to allow low-barrier navigation centers as a by right permitted use?
Uh, part of it is, just, just adding the use, no, um, but there's actually um other aspects of that uh that are implicated due to changes in state law uh with respect to how you define these kinds of uses and other terms, use categories, usually we have in our code that we want to update as well.
Correct.
Okay, let's move on to six. Six A.
I have a question. Um, there's a, there's a move in Los Angeles, the city of LA, uh, I think it's a Ridley Thomas Bonin thing, to partner with the county uh to leverage vouchers. Um, this has, I think it came up a few years ago, but this is now something new, uh, and I'm just wondering, and this is really just people with disabilities, but people, um, all kinds of people, uh, whether we um have the ability to recommend expanding these voucher programs and working with other jurisdictions. Yes, we have also do a look back at five A as well.
Can I say something? Um, that involves doing a contract with the county, I've discussed this with Tara, she needs housing vouchers for the PS3 project. We don't have a contract with the county, and there's not staff to do a contract with the county, so that's, what's going on is that, for project-based vouchers.
Yeah. We're running out.
Yeah.
Running out of project-based vouchers.
And for permanent supportive housing, you need vouchers.
Yes, we're running out of them, we're running out of them in Santa Monica, LA's running out of them, which is why they have to do this.
So can I say that I think that's covered in here, when it says, we'll do additional funding to maintain and extend voucher programs? And if there's a policy you want to add, let's make a motion.
Well, I think I'd like to move, and I would not direct this to be attached to six A, I would direct that this be at some, anywhere it can be in the document, but to, I would, because I raised this a few years ago when I was on Social Services, I really would like us to look at contracting with the county um to maximize our voucher availability.
We shouldn't just look at it, we should do it.
Yeah, yeah, we should, well, the pro, okay, forgive me, Jim, for going into the weeds, the problem, the fear, the fear, Leslie, is that, the fear, Leslie, is that when you contract with the county, you have to potentially be willing to accept vouchers in the other direction, and we are overburdened, so the fear is that by entering into this contract expand, voucher expansion, we wouldn't necessarily control all the vouchers.
How about explore?
So many people, yeah.
How about explore the feasibility of entering into a contract to extend our Section 8 vouchers and other voucher programs?
Let's say project, say project-based.
Project-based vouchers.
Yeah, project-based, including but not limited to programs administered by the County of Los Angeles. So that's my motion.
By Landry, second by? Anyone? Leslie.
Leslie.
Do you have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landry?
Yes.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor?
Yes. Okay, section uh six B, or program six B. Program, so on program six C, and I may have missed this in the staff report, I apologize, did the program expansion, the sense of that program expansion may include but not limited to its additional seniors, et cetera, did that get moved? Or if not, do you tell me why it got deleted?
It did, it got moved to policy 6.4.
Okay, thank you. Anyone on six C? Commissioner Raskin?
Uh, yeah, I think, I think if I'm remembering correctly, our, our intent was to broaden the language a little bit, so that it uh covers more than just seniors, and um, I'm wondering if uh people are medable to uh just uh, I, I don't know, phrasing this a little bit more broadly, I'm trying to wordsmith on the fly here.
Well, does it currently only apply to seniors?
Part of it does, part of it's seniors, part of it's not. Although, Sean, maybe it's also.
So, Ellis, if you, if it, um, so, so it says, and evaluate expanding program assistance to other rent burdened residents vulnerable to displacement. Would you, is that sufficient, or would you like to enumerate some of those rent burdened populations?
No, I think that's, that's good, I think we should leave it broad, and then I think uh if we do that um in the uh objective column, maybe then change the word seniors to um residents vulnerable to displacements.
Can I say something? I, I do need to say, I mean, this is a creation of the Housing Commission, so I think we should really defer to them and how they find their program.
Yeah, I mean, the chat, the, the, the thing is, you know, this is a, this is Santa Monica's contribution to universal basic income, number one. But the thing that makes the POD program kind of have a shape to it is that it initially focused on seniors who were in non-vacancy, decontrolled residences, so they'd lived here for 30 years in the same, 20, 30 years in the same unit, and um they were people on highly reduced incomes, and I will say with all compassion that there was some actuarial reality to this program, because many of the folks who were benefiting the POD program were, are quite elderly. And, and there was a commitment made, and it was clear, once we started subsidizing someone, we were never going to pull that subsidy for as long as they lived, basically, um, and certainly for as long as they lived in that unit. So I think we open up, I don't think this is our area to discuss, really, and I'm, I, I, I think we need to defer to the Housing Commission and to the other, and to city staff, who are really trying to figure out a coherent, actuarially defensible POD program, and to determine who would, um, who would benefit from that, and I, I know those are conversations that are ongoing. Um, I don't think we should um, you know, I, I really don't think we should get too much into the weeds here.
Uh, Commissioner Raskin, do you want to make a motion, or have you been persuaded otherwise?
I, I, I think we should, we should leave open the possibility for, for broadening the POD program consistent with the goals of the Housing Commission. Um, I, I think, uh, you know, if, if we're going to, we are going to be specific, then we should maybe use the term uh seniors and persons with disabilities. I, I understand that's a term of honor in, in um in uh the appropriate parlance here, but um, yeah, if, if there's not support among my peers to, to broaden it uh beyond that, then I, I, I would make the motion for uh seniors and persons with disabilities.
I would second that.
Would you accept the friendly amendment to make it even vaguer and say, you know, the most vulnerable? I, I think, or the most housing insecure, or, but I, I can, with seniors and persons with disabilities, it just feels very.
Let's hear from Heidi for a second.
Just very quickly, and, and the planning manager may want to jump in, I, I do want to remind the commission that these programs uh represent a commitment to this by the city, and so, you know, that's part of the reason why that language got moved to a policy, because I don't believe city staff felt comfortable making that level of commitment in a program. These programs are going to be used to uh review compliance with the Housing Element by HCD, so just uh something to consider.
Could we, could we have the suggested language as a policy? I guess it already is, the program expansion already is a policy. Okay, Commissioner Raskin, what's your pleasure?
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll move that we just amend the language to say seniors and persons with disabilities.
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Wait, before we vote, can I make the argument that Heidi make, I, I worry that if that is included, we're now committing the city to going to persons with disabilities, and I'm not sure that that is our place to do. to going to persons with disabilities, and I'm not sure that that is our place to do.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm concerned about that. I'm really concerned about, I was there, I, I helped write aspects of this program with the wraparound services. So I'm really with, with Mike Sola, so I'm really worried about putting words in that get ahead of the Housing Authority and the Housing Commission. Like, I, I really want to express concern about that.
While the council can take it out.
Okay.
Or, I mean, or maybe we opt about, I don't know, let's.
And the commission, the commission, so Service Commission can opine on this between now and council. And maybe you can bring that to their attention, Sean. Okay.
Commissioner Fonda Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
No, I think it's outside our wheelhouse.
Commissioner Lambert?
No, it's uncontrolled, um, not having Housing Commission weigh in.
Commissioner Landrus?
No.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor?
Yes. Okay, six D and then David. Six E. And Lisa. Six F. E. And H. Hey, people, we're really very close. Thank you for hanging in. Um, seven. Seven A. I mean, really, does anybody have any comments on seven?
Yeah.
Okay, so I feel like we've gotten through a lot tonight, and I appreciate the commission's ticket to it now. I obviously am really, my vocabulary has really gone downhill at this point. Um, I know that I personally have some comments on other sections, um, like including the appendices. I'm not prepared to go through those tonight, and I'm not sure anybody else has the stamina. So I would propose to the commission that we, um, sit on Friday. We get a summary, sort of bulleted list from staff, um, as to what our straw votes were tonight. And like, look, if they have time to integrate them into the housing element, that's great. Um, I would just request that if you're going to do that, that they be a different color than your other red line. Right? So we have red lines that show the changes between the submitted housing element and what we're looking at tonight. So then I would like to see red lines, if you're going to do red lines in like blue or purple. So we can just easily figure out what was changed. And that we have discussion of any changes to the appendices or other chapters. Um, Vice Chair Reese, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to ask. St, I mean, it seems to me we got through a, a heck of a lot of stuff going through all the program. So I'm wondering in staff's mind, is there anything critical tonight that we haven't gotten to? I know we don't have a lot of bandwidth, but time is short. I'm wondering, staff, is there something critical we missed that you can't live without tonight?
Uh, I don't believe so. The, you know, the rest of the changes in the chapters and, I mean, the changes we did are really in response to HCD's comments. So, um, the programs was really the crux of any sort of, uh, substance of policy. Um, so, you know, we have direction on that. Um, I will say on Friday, we will come back to you with essentially, I think you've seen it before, like an addenda table. It's probably the cleanest and easiest way, um, for you to see, you know, what, what the commission's, uh, recommendation is. And then it'll allow, allow us to easily add on to that during the meeting. So we have a clear record, um, of the commission's overall recommendation.
Commissioner Landrus?
Can I just ask, um, because we had, you know, some, uh, misunderstandings between August and now, and also, I mean, POD is an example, but I think there are probably some other places where we took votes and as staff looks to, you know, include the wording and consults with other city colleagues, may find that our recommendations are infelicitous or wrong. Um, could you, in a different color or a different section, kind of call out the places where you're going to come back to us and say, wait, please rethink or reconsider? Uh, because I'm assuming, for example, on POD, you'll go to the house, you'll talk to the Housing Authority before Friday. Um, hoping you will, uh, but there may be others, there may be other areas where this is going to be, where a revision is going to be needed. So if you could call those out for us, that would be really helpful.
We'll do our best, uh, to, to do that, um, given the time available, uh, you know, we'll, we'll obviously go through the commission's recommendations tonight and try to give you our best response for that. I don't know whether we'll get through all of it. Um, certainly for the council report, you know, you will have, as we usually do, kind of a staff response. So there's a clear thing of, you know, what is in the final draft. Um, I, I would say if commissioners have, um, specific comments, to the extent you can perhaps get them to us in writing ahead of the meeting. Um, we really only have two days to turn around because we have to post the agenda ahead of Friday. So, um, as soon as you can get them to us, would be much appreciated. Um, it'll probably help us have a more efficient meeting on Friday as well.
I have a question.
Um, Dan, didn't, didn't the POD motion not pass, by the way?
What?
It, it passed. It passed four-three.
Oh, it did pass four-three, okay.
Are we taking public testimony on Friday? Or no?
Uh, ye, ye, yes, you are.
Okay.
It is a separate meeting.
Don't we have thousands of witnesses?
The other thing, um, I would like, I guess I would like some response to. I know there has been a lot of concern about the, the listing of the constraints, and I think Mr. Pritchard, that was like the crux of his, um, letter. So, um, Jane, can we also get some feedback from you all on Friday about that letter? And in particular about the discussion about the constraints?
Uh, sure, we can do that.
Um, and I think Commissioner Landrus asked if we are recommending certica, certification of EAR. I don't have. I don't think we're doing that, are we?
We haven't seen it yet.
Yes, we have.
We saw the draft. We haven't seen the final.
Oh, right, right.
So the final has been posted online and, uh, we were going to take that, yes, on Friday with the recommendation from PC.
Oh, we are.
Yes.
Um, Commissioner Raskin?
Sorry, my internet cut out for just one second. Chair Pastor, you asked about the vote on the POD program. Just to confirm, that did pass, uh, the motion passed four-three, if I recall correctly, right?
It did. I was, I was mistaken. Yeah. Okay. Um, so just to finish up the agenda, let me find it. Um, we have no written communication, which is item ten. We have no public input, uh, which is eleven, and so we move to adjournment. It is ten forty-nine PM, twentieth, and we will reconvene at three PM on Friday, the twenty-fourth. Thanks, everyone.
Right.